Recording in progress.
All right, Mr. Chair, we're live whenever you're ready to start.
Morning all, I would like to call the September 15th meeting of the Montecito Planning Commission to order. Can we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Get down to our agenda, our hearing is now called to order. Can we have our TV coverage announcement?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning to the commission. Montecito Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County Senate Barfa Television, CSPTV, Channel 20, at 9:00 a.m. in the South Coast, Long Pooh, San Diego Valley, Samaria, and Orchid areas. We broadcast the Montecito Planning Commission hearings on Fridays after 5:00 p.m. on CSPTV Channel 20. Today's hearing will also be streamed live on the county's website and will be available for download in a day or two. Would you like me to move on to roll call, Chair, Mr. Chair?
Yes, yes, please.
Commissioner Palice.
Here.
Commissioner Keller.
Here.
Commissioner Senour.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
And Chair Kupiak.
Here.
And I just want to say thank you for our commissioners for being patient. I know that we had some issue with the Zoom links this morning, so thank you for your patience on that.
Thank you, David, let us move on to the agenda status report.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. In regards to the status of the agenda, we have three items listed on our standard agenda. We have a presentation by the Montecito Fire Protection District. And then we have the Maridero lot split. And then the last item is the continuation of the appeal of Grissini. That staff has submitted a memo on that last one to ask for continuance. And so we will read that in the record when we get to it, and the commission can take action on it. And my recommendation, when we get to that point, is do one of two things, either drop it from the agenda or continue it to a date specific. Continuing it to a date unknown is the same as dropping it from the agenda. So when we get to that part of the agenda, I'll provide some direction when we get there. And other than that, staff is ready to present on all the items today on that. And I can use the projection report, Mr. Chair, if you'd like.
Yes, please.
So our next scheduled hearing is going to be on October 20th. And we do have a number of items. The Casa Dorinda Open Space Management Plan is being scheduled for that date. We tend to have the Bucket Brigade presentation scheduled for that date. And then we have two development projects on that date as well. And then after that, our next hearing will be on November 17th. There's long range planning is bringing an item before you on the housing bill implementation and zoning ordinance amendments. And then following that is December 15th, it would be our last hearing of the year. I can't believe 2021 is almost done. We've reached the end of our projection report for the Montecito Planning Commission. Right now, we don't have any items scheduled for December, but we recommend to keep that open. As we move through the year, we'll probably be scheduling things for that date. So that concludes the projection report, and then I will defer to Director Palman during the director's report in regards to the format of this hearing. As of right now, we're anticipating potentially turning back in person in October. But I'll let Director Palman provide any more details on that in that regards. But that concludes the projection report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We'll now open the meeting to public comment for any items that are not on the standard agenda. David, were there any, any requests?
Chair Kupiak, we only have one speaker who had requested to speak on an item on our standard agenda. So nothing for general public comment.
Okay, I will close public comment and move on to the, any informational reports from our planning commissioners? You know, I got it. Commissioner Keller.
Thank you. I just wanted to report for those who do not regularly go up hot springs or infrequently. There is work being done on the Hot Springs Bridge, which is just north of Casa Dorinda. They finally started that. And I had, I had been told by Chris Veden that that was the next stage after they finished the pathway along Hot Springs. I had also asked about that center triangular area, which now houses a lot of boulders and one very sad looking oak tree. But I don't know of the plans for that. That is a county property, although it has been maintained by Casa Dorinda. And possibly next month, we can find out from Casa Dorinda if they have any plans to do any work there. So that's all I have to report, thank you.
Commissioner Senour.
Hi, yeah, just sort of a note here on a project we had had in the past, which on East Valley, which involved moving a house to a lot right next door contiguous with it. It was before us, the house has been moved. It's quite amazing what technology can do. It was quite, took a lot of prep, but it only took four hours to move. So it, and it was reoriented, so that's a success in my long range mission of sustainable land use. That's a hallmark of it. So if you have time, drive by, walk by, it's right off the Innisbrook Eastment pathway, and it's just amazing. So I just wanted to give a shout out and a heads up to that, thank you.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Senour, that's great. Okay, then I think we will now move on to our planning commissioners information, oh, no, I'm sorry, minutes, approval of the minutes. There we are. I guess we are to approve minutes of both May 19th, June 16th, and August 4th. Do I hear any motions?
Mr. Chair, before we go that, I just wanted to point out that some of the staff that was here for the Caltrans item in May are, have joined the meeting and are available for questions if needed, as we're reviewing the comments, which is an exhibit to the May 19th meeting minutes.
Donna, I see your hand raised, no? So do I have comments or a motion to approve?
I have a comment.
Ron?
We say that the Caltrans Committee or Group for the Freeway is here to answer questions, is that correct? Did I just hear that?
That is what I said, yes.
Yeah, is there any comments that they have, any new information of substance worth telling us in the last 90 days? Is that not appropriate now?
I leave that to the chair, I suspect that we should probably try to get through the minutes.
Okay. Since they're here, Bob, I just thought maybe there's anything they could, but I guess it's probably not the right format.
I think since it's not agendized, I think we have to kind of set aside, Commissioner Keller.
I thought the comments were very well stated and quite complete. But I'm wondering what kind of status they have as a part of the minutes? Is that just means it's part of public record? Is there any action that will occur with these notes or comments? And I'm wondering, I'm just wondering what will happen with these comments now that they have been written and are made part of the minutes? How, will there be any follow up on this? Secretary Wilson?
Yeah, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Keller. My recollection is that the commission had asked for more detailed minutes in regards to that hearing. So that way you would have, you and the public could have a record of what was referenced or talked about in that hearing. And so if there's any subsequent follow up or briefings, then the commission could go back to these minutes and have them available for a reference item. So that's my understanding for the reason why we did a more complete write up of the minutes.
Thank you, I'm just wondering if at any point these will be passed along to county planning commissions, since they're the ones that actually have jurisdiction. I think it might be quite helpful for them to see our concerns and to note what we were attempting to question and get responses to. Can we request that these be moved along to the county?
So Chair Kupiak, Commissioner Keller, so staff have these minutes, and staff will be working with the County Planning Commission and the applicants team to make sure that these comments are relayed to the County Planning Commission and all the other parties working on this project. So yes, that is going to occur. As of right now, the action before you is to approve these minutes, and then we can work with staff as far as how these minutes get distributed to the parties.
Thank you, I just thought it was appropriate to know, since this is a part of the minutes, to know the procedure. And do we, can I ask one more question? Which is, do you have any sense of when the county will be hearing this, or will be, or these will be forwarded on to the county?
Commissioner Keller, through the chair, I don't, we don't have a timeline for that. And as of right now, we're not agendized to go into the details of this project, but we're on the minutes right now. So we can follow up with you afterwards as far as the scheduling of that project. And maybe during the director's report, Director Palman can potentially give an idea of the timeline for that.
Thank you, you understand my concern, since we made the effort to include these as part of the minutes. I wanted to be sure that whatever was included was effective and could be made use, was a useful tool. So this is part of the minutes, I believe. Without those answers, thank you, I will move to approve the minutes of May 19th, 2021.
Commissioner Keller.
Yes, I just moved to approve the minutes.
I second that.
Roll call vote.
Commissioner Kupiak.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Palice.
Aye.
Commissioner Keller.
Aye.
Commissioner Senour.
Aye.
And Commissioner Miller. Motion passes 401.
Terrific, thank you all, let us move on to the director's report.
There are more minutes, Chair Kupiak.
Are we just approving one at a time?
Yes.
Yes.
Chair Kupiak and Commissioner, just for some information, I think we, again, recognize and acknowledge Commissioner Miller is on there. I'm just, those minutes that Commissioner Miller was not in attendance for, he could abstain on and not take action on it, as he wasn't a commissioner during those times. So when you take those roll call votes, Commissioner Miller, you could abstain from taking any action on those, if you weren't part of those hearings.
So that was the basis of my abstention from the May vote, because I, I wasn't there. So, but was that also, I was there for the June vote, or the June meeting.
Yeah, Commissioner Miller, through the chair, so if you're there for the June meeting, then that would be, I mean, you'd take action on those minutes. You could vote for those minutes.
So David, you're going to record Commissioner Miller's May vote as an abstention.
Yes, that's, that's what he said, so that's how I've recorded it, yes.
Okay, let us move on to the minutes for June 16th. Commissioner Keller.
I move to approve the minutes of June 16th.
I second that.
All right, roll call vote.
Commissioner Palice.
Aye.
Commissioner Keller.
Aye.
Commissioner Senour.
Aye.
Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
Chair Kupiak.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
And we will now move on to the minutes of August 4th. And Commissioner Keller.
I move to approve the minutes of August 4th.
I'll second that.
Our roll call vote.
Commissioner Palice.
Aye.
Commissioner Keller.
Aye.
Commissioner Senour.
Abstain.
Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
And Chair Kupiak.
Aye.
Motion passes 401 with one abstention.
Okay, thank you, now we can move on to our director's report. Is Lisa here?
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning, Lisa, how are you today?
We're having trouble hearing you, Director Palman.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, super. I want to say good morning to Mr. Chair and the rest of the planning commission, happy to be here, haven't seen you for some time. Few updates, as Mr. Wilson mentioned, we still are in a response to COVID-19 at this point in time. Our offices are open, but there is a mask mandate to be in our services and seeking input from the public, whether or not they find the, our hours of operation are working for them. And if the variety of opportunities to meet with staff are working for them. So we're going to be keeping track of that and modifying our, our public counter services as need be. I do want to note that Mr. Wilson is correct that the revisions to the Brown Act, so the emergency action taken by the governor is set to expire at the end of September. But there is a new bill on the governor's desk. It is AB 361 that was sponsored by Rivas. And that does allow agencies to go, move to teleconference hearings if there's an emergency or a safety impact. So that will be a permanent change to the Brown Act if the governor does indeed sign it, allowing different agencies to move without a declaration or a state of emergency declared by the governor. There are also some other changes under the consideration by the governor. One is AB 339, which is sponsored by the Legislative League. And that one is more or less about maintaining teleconferencing access for the members of the public. So I think we all recognize that the change that came about and the move that we had to make to a virtual platform expanded the ability for members of the public to participate in the process. And so that bill is going to require that the agencies still maintain that opportunity. And it, and the county is certainly interested in doing that.
Before you go on from this Director Palman, revisiting this executive governor's order, does it also, these two bills do any encompass regarding the Brown Act, commissioners or other elected members, or elected members to, as long as there's a quorum for their possibility that one or two commissioners could be, in fact, online instead of in the hearing room?
Thank you for, I was just going to mention that, and thank you for bringing it up. So those two bills do not address that, and we are still working with CSAC and have made contact with the governor's office about that, because they have made those provisions, I think, available to the state commissions and bodies under the Bagley-Kean Act. So we're pushing for that, and we expect that we'll bring that up again when the legislature reconvenes in January. So unfortunately, we didn't get that in, even though we tried to get the legislators to amend their bills. I think if, if we continue to see the Delta variant and potentially other variants, we will have those emergency provisions or those provisions of the Brown Act that would be built in that will allow us to do that for safety purposes. So I need to coordinate with county council on that, but I will keep the commissions posted.
And may I just ask a question, please, about public commentary and public involvement? Because it's been my observation and what I've heard in terms of feedback from members of the public is that not everyone who is that not everyone who wishes to participate is comfortable or able to do so electronically, and they prefer the in-person meeting for, in order to be able to have the full access to public comment. Has it been your observation that there's been more participation by the public as a result of the teleconferencing? Because that was not my observation. That's not the feedback I've been getting.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Keller, I would say I don't have any data on that, but my anecdotal information from talking with people is that it has provided greater access, because people don't have to come to a hearing in the middle of the day and wait till an item comes up. They can be at home, or they can be in their office and be online, and then participate at the moment in time where it's scheduled for them to participate, and that saves them a great deal of time. So that's, I haven't done a survey on it, but that's what people are sharing with me. I would say we have a pretty healthy participation at the County Planning Commission through the online platform. I suspect there are some people that it is more challenging for, and eventually we will have a mixture of opportunities for people to.
Thank you. I think that, that mixture would be good, because of course, we get the complaints for people who aren't technologically comfortable or don't have, you know, access. Many of us are very familiar with Zoom, many others are not. So the combination, I think, would be the best solution. Thank you.
Yes. And once the things are safe enough, I think we will, we will go back to that. Anything else on COVID? Any other questions?
Pardon me a second. This is Commissioner Plechay. David, not David, but Jeff mentioned the idea of going back to in-person hearings. Is that benefit, what decides that? Who decides it?
Right, right. So Commissioner Plechay through the chair. We will assess the situation as we progress towards the end of September. So we have, you know, essentially two weeks left, right? And, and we have to wait to see if the governor signs the bill, or if the governor extends the provisions, temporary provisions to the Brown Act before he signs the bill. But I really think it has to do with the spread of the virus and wanting to keep the public safe and wanting to keep the commission safe. So, and our staff, right? So I'm going to be assessing that and working with council on it, and then we'll keep you posted on it.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, moving along. I don't know if you observed, but the board did pass a requirement for vaccination or weekly testing for all county employees. That is going to be taking effect at the beginning of October, and the details of that are being worked out. I did coordinate with council on this to see if planning commissioners or, or individuals that sit on different volunteer bodies would be required to be vaccinated or tested, and you do not. So it has, you have to actually be an employee of the county and working a certain number of hours for that requirement to be applied to you. I also wanted to let you know that the board yesterday did go ahead and accept the recommendations from the Montecito Planning Commission and the County Planning Commission on the extension of those temporary provisions that we made during COVID at the beginning in 2020, when we want to allow businesses to be able to use outdoor areas and ensure safety in their operations. So we've extended those to 2023, and the County Planning Commission had recommended extending them to October 31st, and just to allow people to get through the summer. And the board supervisors took that recommendation from the planning commission and extended them to October 31st, 2023. The board also directed long-range planning yesterday to make an amendment to the cannabis ordinance once again. They, we are, have nearly enough approvals and permits to reach the cap in the inland area, and this isn't so much a responsibility of the planning commission for Montecito, but we are going to be taking an amendment back that would require a conditional use permit for future applications in the event the cap changes at some point in, in the future. There is no interest in changing the cap at this time, because I think all the board members feel that there needs to be some time to understand what the operations are like, and how the communities are being impacted, and any other future changes that they might want to make before they would even consider something like that. So that is not on the table right now. It could be something the board takes up in the future. We are also going to be making revisions to childcare requirements and permit requirements. There are a couple of new laws that were passed that streamline childcare operations, and we'll be looking at our development standards and other requirements to ensure that we can simplify the process for those operations. I also wanted to let you know that, and I, I don't know if Commissioner Keller mentioned this, but yesterday, the planning, or Public Works processed a budget revision to apply $100,000 to conduct a study to add more trailhead parking at Hot Springs. So I think that will be a positive thing, because I know that trail gets a tremendous amount of use, and there's a lot of parking that happens on the road. I can't remember the name of the road that extends down into Rivin Rock, but that road gets a lot of parking, and I'm not sure all of it's legal. And then just future board items, we have a couple of cannabis items that are going to be going to the board in September and October. Key Site 3, which is going to the planning commission, County Planning Commission, which is an ORCUT on the 12th of October. And then we have an item going back to the board in November on the 16th, which is something the board directed us to come back with last June, and that's a consideration of a further expansion of the Long Range Planning Division, and a discussion about what a new team, a complete new team in that division would add in terms of additional work opportunities, additional program opportunities that the board may want to consider. And so they'll be considering what those other updates use to the general plan, or different kinds of ordinance amendments, or creating more streamlined processes. They can assess those programs and the cost of a new team and decide whether or not that's something they want to move forward with. So we're having that meeting in November to have this discussion with them, so that they can be ready when the CEO goes back to the board in December with budget preparations. And then, of course, we will be back to the board in March with a work program. So stay tuned on that, and we will keep you posted. And I think that's it. Are there any questions? Oh, there is, there was the question about the 101. And I know that Ms. Lou is in the audience in the hearing room. It's my understanding that the application is not complete at this point, but I'm going to invite Ms. Lou to approach the microphone and provide some information regarding the status of that application.
Good morning, Chair, members of the commission. The Highway 101 Segment 4D application, like Ms. Plowman said, is still incomplete, and we are still waiting for a number of submittal items to complete that application. Once it is complete, we do plan to bring it back to your commission for another briefing and another round of comments from you, which we will plan to transmit to the planning commission. We do not have a hearing date identified at this time, because, like I said, the application is still incomplete, and we don't yet have a timeline on when it will become complete. We do expect to be writing another review letter in the near future, but again, it remains incomplete at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I did have one other question. Thank you for the follow-up on the 101. May I just ask you, Ms. Plowman, you said, right after you were talking about the cannabis, you said revisions to, was it childcare? Is this for county employees? Or is that, you segued right from cannabis, so I didn't know if there was a connection?
Sure. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Keller, no, we are processing two different ordinance amendment packages, right? Or there'll be one that relates to childcare and one that relates to cannabis. And so it's childcare facilities throughout the county. So that would impact the Montecito Land Use Development Code, as well as the Land Use Development Code and Article 2, potentially.
Thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Miller?
Um, yeah, Director Plowman, I want to be sensitive as to the use of this forum as an educational function. That said, I am, I am new to this and have a lot to learn. And one of the things I was wondering if you could potentially touch on in a future presentation is how the county approaches the RENA allocation numbers for Montecito, and what role this commission has in that. Is that my understanding is, is that the, the RENA number covers an area that is not co-terminous with this body, but it's a larger region than that. And so is, one, I don't know if that's correct or not, but that's my understanding, is that I would, I'd be really interested to kind of learn a little bit more about that and understand what is the role of this body in terms of looking at that RENA process as it relates to what we cover and how that interacts with the larger zone that we don't cover.
Sure. Commissioner Miller through the chair. So regional items are generally the purview of the County Planning Commission. So if it affects the larger county areas, like, let's say that, you know, the housing element's going to cover the entire county. But I think that that's probably a good informational report, that we can come back with long-range planning and provide some information just on the process, what the numbers are, and where they are with the housing element update. Right now, they're doing a, they're surveying available lands, right? So it's a land inventory is where we start. The county received a pretty hefty number. I mean, all jurisdictions actually received pretty hefty numbers, as you might have witnessed. I mean, I think the city of Santa Barbara's got to provide housing units for, or land available for up over 8,000 units, new units. And we are, I think we're about 5,300. And SB CAG this year divided which ones will be in North County and which ones will be in South County. And so areas will be being considered in those different regions to accommodate the housing numbers. So the bulk of the housing numbers came to the South County. And, but I would, I'd be happy to have long-range planning come back and give an informational briefing to the planning commission on the role that you might play and just where they are in the process.
That would be wonderful. And again, understanding, to the extent that the numbers show up in our little bubble, how, if our role is nothing, I totally understand that, but I just, to know that it is nothing, and that if we're getting questions and feedback about it, that we, we understand that.
Understood. Sure.
Right. Commissioner Plechay?
Yes, Director Plowman, could you, now, I understand that long-range planning is one thing, but I thought the agricultural housing modification was going to occur this year. Is that something I understand correctly or not, as far as agricultural or otherwise housing on ag lands?
Commissioner Plechay through the chair. I, I'm not sure which provision you're talking about, but we have made changes to the rules that we, in the last two years for ag employee dwellings, or three years. So those are already in effect.
They're in effect. Okay.
They're in effect.
All right. That's good. Thank you.
And then, of course, the ADU laws are in effect as well.
Right.
Yes.
Sorry for the question.
No worries. No worries.
Right.
Anything else I can help you with?
Lisa, thank you.
Thank you.
We will now move, David?
Yes, can I, can I just ask Director Plowman, could you give us an update, please, on what you know about SB 9 and SB 10?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Maybe, this is not the time, but I thought, since it seems to be in the vernacular these days, we hear a lot about it, and I believe they're both on the governor's desk, and it will impact this county along with the whole state. If you have any sort of updates or insight, et cetera, about those two bills. Thank you.
Sure. Commissioner Senauer through the chair. So SB 10 is a law that would allow agencies to adopt provisions that streamlined higher-density housing units, kind of in the urbanized areas along transit corridors and whatnot. So it's not mandated that an agency adopt that. It just creates a provision for them to be able to do it. So we, the county did not object to that particular bill because of that reason, that it was voluntary. SB 9 is a bill that is designed to create additional housing in single-family neighborhoods. So it allows for another unit and a lot split that circumvents the MAP Act, potentially. And so that is sitting on the governor's desk. We did, as a county, oppose that bill, because we felt that it, it, it basically circumvents the county's ability to oversee those types of proposed changes. And we did not feel that it actually would result in more housing that was affordable to the people who really needed in our communities. So, because the cost of housing is so high, and there were concerns that CSAC wrote a letter concerned about, you know, that this could be some sort of boon to future developers who buy up lots and then, and then split them and, and, you know, make a good deal of income off of that without actually the community getting much for it. So maybe in communities where the cost of housing is lower, it would add some housing that's affordable to their workforce, but we didn't think that that was something we would see here in Santa Barbara County. So we did oppose it. I don't know what the governor's going to do, but I will definitely keep you posted. Thank you very much.
Okay, great. Thank you. We're going to move on to our, David, do we need to notice the way public hearings?
Mr. Chair, so that's just a supplemental notice. The commission doesn't need to take any action on those.
Right. That being said, we will now move on to our standard agenda.
Sorry.
Sorry. I have a question.
Yeah, and so do I. Thank you. Thank you. I'm just wondering about the standard for something to have a public hearing waived as opposed to it coming before the commission or coming, because some of these projects look like things that should be given further consideration, how this determination is made.
So, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Keller, so in the ordinance, it provides an opportunity for applicants to seek an opportunity to waive hearing. So this is the process by which they do that. They submit a request. Staff will review that request, and then we provide notice that a request has been made for waiving of the hearing. And if none of the, no request for public hearing is received by the department from the area that's being noticed, then we proceed forward with the project. So that, that's the process in really quick nutshell. The ordinance does provide for this option for a waived hearing.
So basically, it's a staff decision as to whether or not the project rises to the level that should require further scrutiny?
So the, Commissioner Keller through the chair, the ordinance does provide for certain types of permits to types of permits to request a waived hearing, and that's the, some of the criteria the staff looks at. Is it able to get, have a waived hearing? And if so, then we, we do the noticing. And this is part of the notification requirement that it shows up on the MPC agenda. And so short answer is yes, it is a staff and supervisor level to make sure that it's consistent in that that permit type is available to have a waived hearing.
I see. And what if we see an issue that we feel does require some further consideration? Is that, do we have any jurisdiction in that regard?
The jurisdiction would be as if a neighbor that is noticed would request it. So this isn't for the Montecito Planning Commission to, to take jurisdiction unless you were a neighbor and had noticed to it. Otherwise, this is just noticing for the neighbors to, to them to know that, hey, there is a project in your area that's requested waived hearing.
I see. Okay. So this is nothing we can have any other authority over, except just to be aware that it's happening?
Commissioner goes to the chair, that is correct. So in the event that a, a neighbor or somebody that was noticed or saw this on the agenda and they were an affected party, they could request a public hearing. And at that point, it would, then a public hearing would be held. And then you'd have jurisdiction over it.
Jeff, these are projects, these are projects that still go before M Bar.
Mr. Chair, that is correct.
Okay.
And the, these are all, see, the ones that I'm seeing here are all post-development permits with hearing, and they're requesting a waived hearing. And they would be appealable if they, if somebody wanted to do that. So it's not blocking any public act, public participation through that.
We are the appellate body.
Very good. Thank you.
Commissioner Sennour?
Yes, I had the same query and regarding item 11, in that both CDHs were already waived. And I'm just trying to square where in section 12, it's a notice of intention to waive. So there's, one is, and I've, I've spoken to Jeff and to Alex on this, but just for clarity, where does, I don't believe the two that have been waived, were they before us in the same presentation as we're seeing in item 12, which is the attempt to waive? So, yeah, just for clarity for those two, thank you, Secretary Wilson, are you going to, I just, just where, where they're both Article twos, right? So CDHs, et cetera, right? These are not in one. So please, just the differentiation. Thank you.
Commissioner Sennour through the chair, the differentiation, especially on this agenda, has to do with when the, the Montecito Planning Commission only meets once a month. So if you cancel a hearing, or we don't have a hearing, then we, then it precludes the ability to, to have the intent to waive the public hearing show up on the notice. So the ordinance requires that these waived hearings be noticed through this means, through the agenda on the Montecito Planning Commission. So under item 11, being that we didn't have a hearing last month, we weren't able to have these notices showing up on that agenda. So that's why you're seeing a two differentiation between 11 and 12. So under 12, it shows an intent to waive because we're putting it on the agenda and then we'll waive it after the hearing today. But the item 11 is just a notification that it was waived because there was no meeting to have it posted on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
So, and commissioners and through the chair, just, these come up every so often, and I know there's some confusion with these, but the ordinance requires that these be placed on the agenda as, as a noticing requirement. So that, that's why they're showing up here. And I know there's some confusion with it sometimes because they, they, they show up infrequent, or they show up like on this one, a number of them. So that's why they're here. It's a noticing requirement. Glad to answer any other questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners.
Thanks, Jeff. We will now move on to the standard agenda, and I think we are going to do a little bit of flipping around and take the item number three, the Grissini accessory dwelling unit appeal first.
Mr. Chair, would you like me to read that into the record?
Yes, please.
Great. The following is a hearing on the request of Larry Grissini, property owner of 1775 Frontal Point Lane. Consider 20 appeal 34, an appeal of the director's decision to deny the Grissini accessory dwelling unit project case number 20CDP 76.
Right. My understanding is this item is being considered for a continuance.
So, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I believe the planner and the supervisors in the hearing room, so Mr. Nicole, oh, sorry, I'm stuttering, Ms. Lou. I'm out of practice, Ms. Lou and, or Mr. Schmuckel, do you want to speak to the continuance? And then, Mr. Chair, if the applicants want to say anything to the continuance, we can. And then after that, we do need to have public comment on the, the continuance, and then we can bring it back. Ms. Lou, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Chair and Mr. Wilson, Chris Schmuckel, the planner, is here to give a few brief comments on this continuance.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Chris Schmuckel. I'm the planner working on this project. So this item was last seen before the commission on June 16th, where the commission directed staff to continue processing the application and prepare findings for approval of the project's encroachment into the ESH buffer area. So as staff continued processing the application, the applicant, the project's location is within the, the rear setback area, and the applicant needs to apply for a variance or redesign the project. And so to date, that application hasn't been submitted, but through communication with the applicant, they've indicated that they're working on that. So since the project isn't quite ready to be heard and potentially approved, we're requesting a continuance of the project at this time. I'm here to have, I'm happy to answer any questions if the commission has any.
Great. Commissioner Keller?
So if the request's a variance, does the commission have jurisdiction over approval or not of that variance?
Yes.
Commissioner Keller through the chair, yes, so that variance is a discretionary permit, and that would be brought before the commission with the, with the ADU appeal as well. They would be brought together.
I'm sorry, with the ADU, you mean, appeal on, on the project itself?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you very much.
Commissioner Sennour?
Yeah, um, thank you, Chris. What sort of timeline if, for, for consideration of the continuance, of course, there's the, the, to a time certain, to a date certain, which basically involves noticing or not versus sort of open ended. Does staff have any recommendations at this point for a date certain, or you're not at that point yet to, to offer that?
Commissioner Sennour through the chair, we, so I didn't provide a specific date in the planner memo, because I am unsure when the variance application and the, you know, the other potential issues with the departments are going to be worked out. However, if the commission wants to continue it to a specific date, I would recommend December 15th. I think that would give us enough time to get these issues sorted out and to draft up the findings for approval potentially of the project and bring it back to the commission in time.
So, I'm sorry, you said December, at our hearing in December, that, that gives you a window right now for the possibility that in fact, the additional information could be attained through the, for the project to go forward. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Keller?
Thank you. Since the applicant seemed to be concerned about having all five commissioners present before a hearing was, or a decision was made on this item, and they did wait until there were five commissioners, I think I should make it public that I will not be able to attend the December 15th meeting, and therefore there will not be five commissioners at the December 15th meeting. So since that seems to be a priority for the applicant, and it was something that was expressed previously, I suggest that we not use December 15th as the date certain to reschedule the hearing. Thank you.
Jeff, I'm not sure what the protocol is here in terms of rescheduling beyond December 15th. I mean, I, I can imagine that the, the applicant might want five commissioners to be present, but doesn't a quorum fulfill that, fulfill our obligation? I mean, we, this has been on continuance for a long time. I mean, Susan, do you particularly feel like you want to be here for that, that, that presentation?
Yes, I absolutely do. I, as you know, I was, we tried to, we had a failed motion to deny the project, and I think that it's important for me to participate in any further discussion. And the applicant made a big point of wanting to have five commissioners present. Now, maybe they wanted five specific commissioners present, but since that point was made, I think there should be five commissioners present.
Commissioner Palice?
So we haven't heard from the applicant. Does the applicant have work to do? Can they project how much time they need? So before we start asking the county, I think it's important that we hear from them if there's going to be, because here we are in September. There's no telling how long this is going to take. So can we get some more feedback?
Good idea.
So Commissioner Kupiak and Commissioners, we, we actually were thinking December 15th would be a good plan. One of the biggest holdups in this time has been just confusion about the setback because the state law does allow ADUs to be four feet from a property line, but that has not yet been approved in the coastal commission. And so that question was, kind of went through the channels in the county. So it has been determined we do need a variance because that, that provision of the ADU law has not yet been adopted in the coastal zone, although it will be probably, certainly by the time the project's constructed. But regardless, we, we now have plans. We are expecting to submit them next week. So we do think December would work. I do want to clarify our concern with having five commissioners before was actually having appointed commissioners, so that if someone were unable to attend, we wouldn't end up with three. However, if Commissioner Keller feels strongly about being at the hearing, of course, we would accommodate that. So we're fine either going December if it's the chair's wish, or bumping it if Ms. Keller feels strongly about attending.
I'm going to make the recommendation that we calendar this for Jan, the January meeting. If there's no objection, I would love to hear a motion.
Commissioners, this is travesty words. Just so you know, the projected January 22 date would be January 19th.
And Mr. Chair, Secretary Wilson, we do need to have public comment before we have a, a motion. I don't know if there is any, but we do need to ask for public comment.
Well, let us open public comment before we move towards this. You know, before that, Commissioner Sennour has her hand raised to make sure that her.
Thank you. I'm just trying to clarify that if, if we do not have a date certain, what is the protocol and process for noticing? Is it, does it make it more difficult to have a hearing? Or, you know, what is, what is the bottom line on that? Secretary Wilson?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Sennour, so the difference is, is continuing to a date certain, like, for example, January 19th, we don't, we don't have to renotice. If we drop it from the agenda, which is preferable than a date uncertain. So if you drop it from the agenda, then the requirement is that when we do select a, a date, that we would just renotice it at that time. So it doesn't impact our ability to have a hearing. It's just about how the noticing will occur. So continuing to a date certain, no noticing, dropping it from the agenda and then re-agendizing it would require a new notice.
And, and regarding noticing, exactly what is the difficulty on that, or what is the process? You notice in the paper, in the press, and you notice to neighbors again? What, how many, what is the, the parameters of the notice, noticing, new noticing if it is not a time, a date certain?
So, may I add something? Secretary Wilson, Commissioner Sennour? In this particular case, we're going to have to renotice it anyhow if there's a variance added to the, the project description, because that was not included in the original.
Thank you.
Noticing. And to answer your follow-up question, noticing in this case would require that we do a notice to the neighbors as well as an ad in the paper, and usually that being the Montecito Journal.
And, and perhaps a new placard? At the site?
Correct.
Um, okay, I'd like to, to move that we continue this item with no date certain. Thank you.
But we, we'll go back to public comment.
Public comment. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any public comment?
Mr. Chair, we don't have anyone who signed up for this item, but I believe they're both signed up for the lot split item. But if either one of those folks would like to comment on this item, raise your hand and I'll call on you. I don't think I have any takers, Mr. Chair, so I think we can move on.
Great. So I'm going to close public comment, and I am going to move on to Commissioner Sennour's motion. Do I hear a second?
I, 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 yeah, I, I would like to, to move that we drop it from the agenda at this time and continue it to, and, and a continuance with no date certain. Since noticing has to be given in any case.
A second, Jeff.
So, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Sennour, the motion maker, I just recommend that we just drop it from the agenda. If you drop it from the agenda, there will be no continuance because it's now just removed from the agenda. And then staff will work with the applicant and Mr. Vialobos on agendizing all the necessary permits at that time, the appeal and the variance, and all those will be noticed appropriately at that time. So I think the motion today is just to drop it from the agenda.
Commissioner Miller?
Um, I, I, I'm tracking the logic of this, and we're obviously spending a lot of time on a rather procedural issue. I wish to respect the wishes of Commissioner Keller, that if we proceed in this fashion, will it potentially reappear in December 15th, or whatever the December date was?
Jeff?
Oh, so Mr. Chair, so I, I didn't know who that question is for. So, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Miller, so, so the motion, I believe, that's on the table or on the floor is to drop it from the agenda. My understanding is that there's one commissioner that, or two that had made comments about not agendizing it for December. So staff can take that, and then we can just move forward with the January. But the, the, the motion needs to either be dropped from the agenda or make a motion to a date certain. And so right now, December 15th isn't on the table, as far as the hearing date, the motion is to just remove it from the agenda. And then staff will place it back on the agenda when it's time.
Knowing that we will not put it on the agenda for December 15th.
That is correct, Chair. Staff understands clearly that December is not a preferable date.
Thank you.
Notion I'm trying to clarify, appreciate it.
Yeah, does the motion? Yeah. Does the motion maker wish to amend the motion?
Well, I, yes. Well, I don't think an amendment to the motion needs to be made. In any case, for clarity, the my motion is to drop this item from this agenda.
Do I hear a second? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Palice.
Yes.
Commissioner Keller.
Aye.
Commissioner Senour.
Aye.
Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
Chair Kupiak.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Great. I would like to move on to our Montecito Fire Protection District briefing and thank our participants to that for their patience through this being shuffled to item number two.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let me just read the item into the record before a presentation starts here. The Montecito Planning Commission will receive a briefing from the Montecito Fire Protection District regarding this year's fire season and efforts the district has made with the community to reduce wildfire wildfire risk.
Hello, can you can you hear us?
How do you still have your hand raised for a comment?
They can't hear us.
No.
Okay.
Hello?
We can hear you. Yes.
You can hear us? Yes. Okay, great.
We also would like to see you, however.
I know, I know. We're working on that. We're just firemen. So, you know, we're not, we're technologically challenged. We did have it up and running earlier. My partner's going to work on it while I while I get going, I guess. Additionally, I think staff has a has a PowerPoint that they're going to show you that we're going to work from today. So, thank you. It's our pleasure to be here this morning. My name is is Aaron Briner. I'm the Battalion Chief Fire Marshal at Montecito Fire Protection District. And I have with me Nick Elquist, one of our wildland specialists. I'm actually really excited he's here. He's seems to be in between one of his many assignments that he's been out this year. So I'm excited that he can be here because most of the the exceptional work that we do in the district is performed by him and his partner, May Porez. Currently, we have resources on the river incident, the Caldo incident, and then we have an engine that's been up on the Dixie for almost seventy days now. So we we just heard that we're supposed to get some rain up there in Northern California. So hopefully that will alleviate or give give them a little reprieve from all the work that they've been doing. So Chief Taylor sends his regards. He's currently at the Cal Chief's Annual Conference down in San Diego. So he can't attend and give you this update, but it is Nick and I's pleasure to present it, an update of the the 2021 fire season, as well as just our preparation, prevention, preparation for the the fire season on behalf of Chief Taylor and and the Montecito Fire Department Board of Directors. Next slide. And next. Oh, yeah, that's tough for me to see. I'm going to have to move along with myself. Okay, so just a quick, a real quick recap on the statewide statewide fire situation. So back in 2020, which was was the largest wildfire season in our state's history, we burned 4.2 million acres, resulted unfortunately in thirty-one deaths and cost in excess of $2 billion. Currently, in this year, as of July eleventh, we've we had burned 2.2 million acres, and this was three times as many acres that had burned in the previous year at this same time. So in our in our largest wildfire season in state's history, we're three times, we burned three times as much currently in this year. So fires are burning, obviously, with a much greater intensity and more frequently, and they're getting larger due to due to many factors, primarily just exacerbated by our extended drought period that we're currently in. Additionally, something that we saw last year heightened by COVID was just a lack of resource. So so that just that just adds to our inability to adequately and effectively and efficiently work on these fires when we have so many fires going for so long and we have limited resources. Next slide. Can you hear us still?
Yes.
Okay, next slide. Oh, can we go back one? There was a delay. Thank you. So locally, locally, as as most of you have probably noticed, we have an increased marine layer for most of August and it's continued into into September. So that's definitely assisted with us and decreased our wildfire ignitions and just provided a welcome increase in our fuel moisture. So on on the front country and the central coast, we've we've definitely benefited from that. Coming up, though, in October and November is our is our local sundowner event. So those, you know, we'll see how the weather patterns hold and we're definitely prepared for that, those events. Overall, though, I just drove drove a few areas in the community. We try and get out and take a look frequently. And and overall, the community looks great. I think with all the work that that our wildland specialists have performed and in conjunction with with all of the community members, we're very, very pleased with the position that the community is is in currently. Next slide. And then and then next. Okay, so back in, I believe, nineteen ninety-four, over twenty-five years ago, Fire Chief Herb McElway had the vision and foresight to recognize the the need for something specific to manage our our beautiful community, the wildland urban interface that we live in, and started with a part-time wildland specialist to oversee all of the all of the needs that that brought. So currently, twenty-five years later, we have two full-time wildland fire specialists who manage all of our wildfire prevention programs. Next. Okay, so there's three, three key components of the patient management and wildfire prevention program. Next slide. Those are the wildfire mitigation projects and we're gonna, sorry, wildfire mitigation projects, public education and outreach and planning. So these are the three parts that we've broken our our wildland vegetation management and prevention program into. And then I'll go into a kind of a brief description of those and then Nick's going to take over and discuss them in a little more detail. Next slide. So the six areas, the six main areas of our wildfire mitigation projects are our fuel treatment network, our neighborhood tag and trim and roadside fuels reduction. Nick's going to talk about those in more detail, give you a little example of of what those entail, and then we'll give you some statistics on how we've done this year so far. The home hardening assistance program is a is a brand new program that we started last year. It's we kind of dipped our toe into into this, came from a lot of the recommendations post Thomas Fire and and debris flow as as an opportunity to do additional work outside of the vegetation management component. So we we identified vents, so house vents that we could update to to ensure that embers can't come into the houses. A lot of, maybe, maybe you don't know, but a lot of the houses are lost, not through the initial front of the fire, but but secondary secondary entry of of the ember cast that comes into the vents and gets established with it either under the house or up in the attic. And we just don't have enough resources to come back and and put engines on every one of those houses. So this is a a way that that we can harden the homes and and allow for more time and for us to get there and hopefully just keep that from happening in the first place. Hazard tree removal is another program that we we kind of separated out from our other projects where we've identified specific hazard trees, whether they're whether they're dead or or would block egress and and we have those removed. And then our neighborhood fire prevention, every year, our all of our captains on the engines get assigned specific areas within the district and they put eyes on every single parcel, all four thousand seven hundred parcels that we have in Montecito, and perform our hazard abatement noticing and and then work with the community to ensure that that all of the defensible space requirements are met. Next slide. Nick's gonna Nick's gonna discuss now in more detail a few of our a few of our mitigation programs.
Okay, sorry, you guys can't see us. For some reason, the camera Murphy's Law decided to stop working, even though it was working about fifteen minutes ago. But like Chief Briner said, the strategy that that we utilize here on the department is essentially looking at historical fires and how the fires have impacted the community in the past. There's been six major catastrophic fires that occurred since the nineteen sixty-four Coyote Fire, and they all enter the community from the north and the wildlands vegetation collectively known as Chaparral. And they burn under a very strong northerly wind locally called the sundowner event, which Chief Briner mentioned, and you are all very familiar with being residents. So our strategy is is relatively simple. Our goal is to separate as much as possible, given the steep slopes, and keep it in mind erosion control that the Chaparral is very good good at, but in increasing the buffer between our northernmost community, where they're the most vulnerable to wildfires, and the larger community as a whole, as you kind of move south throughout the the district. The way that the the fires spread are through both, you know, moving through the vegetation, but under those strong wind events, they're also casting embers further out upwards to a mile ahead in some of these stronger wind events. And so not only are creating buffers on the northern part of the communities, but we're working along roadways and then also working with the individual property owners to create defensible space, both falling within California fire code, but then also going above and beyond and trying to harden those structures as much as possible. So the first project that we'll kind of go into the specifics is what we call the fuel treatment network. And that is on the northern part of the district and it buffers the three, what we call the high road systems, West Mountain, East Mountain, and Bella Vista Roads, incorporates a lot of the driveways and properties that go north of those high roads, buffering in addition to the defensible space if the residents are required to put into place on their properties and expanding that along the system to try to buffer where we are going to most likely see a vegetation fire come from to the north. You could think of, you know, sometimes I've heard it referred to as is these wildland fires as they get into structures, the embers that it casts are almost like a virus that spreads through the air through a community. So the more that we can harden the northern part, the most vulnerable part of our community, and limit the initial structures that would be burning, the the less likely we're going to get that fire to become more of a conflagration and spread south into the community itself. So we work not only with the property owners, but also county fire and roads and floods, the flood control districts, and just work along. It's about sixty acres and we have it on more or less a three-year cycle. So we try to do twenty acres annually. A lot of this work is completed by the Cal Fire crews that are based out of Camrio and the California Conservation Corps program that do a lot of the cutting on this fuel network. And then we have contractors that come in and then chip the brush into the back of a dump truck and then haul it away to AgriChip downtown where they recycle the chips. Next slide, please. The second program that we'll highlight is the tag and trim program. So this is essentially to secure to ensure that there's good access for fire apparatus when needed. Fire code requires thirteen and a half feet height clearance and that's to ensure that our larger type one engines are able to navigate our somewhat narrow roadways. And then also buffering the roads so in terms of an evacuation that there is as much as possible egress for the community during emergency to act to exit our our community. So we have our fire department and and us will drive around through several of our other programs, neighborhood chipping, for instance, and we'll identify limbs that are below that thirteen and a half foot clearance. And then we'll work with the property owners to make sure we gain permission and then to remove the lower hanging branches. This last year, we were able to complete about eight miles of roadways along twelve major roads. Okay, next slide. So within Santa Barbara County, if you look at statistics, seventy-seven percent of our fire ignitions come within fifty feet of a roadway, and more than twenty percent of those are caused by vehicles. So one way we mitigate the threat of ignitions along our roadways is we do an annual spring roadside weed abatement, where we have a contractor that clears about ten feet or as much as they're able to do so, given the slopes of the dead grasses. So we monitor, depending on the previous year's rainfall, when the grass cures out and it's no longer going to be putting on new growth, that will bring our contractors in and weed whip. And that's essentially on our higher roads and some of the main stems, such as cold springs and hot springs and Romero roads. And that's essentially both to limit ignitions, but also to reduce the amount of fire intensity that would be occurring along the road sides if we were to get a fire in the area. One thing to note, we also have the same contractor before we do the weed whipping that will go and remove as much of the invasive weeds as possible. Those are, you know, the tumbleweeds, the castor bean and the tree tobacco are three main ones. And to try to pay particular attention in our creekways and to ensure that we're trying to limit the spread of some of these invasive non-native species throughout the community. So trying to limit that before they go to seed and then before we go in there and actually weed whip them to so to limit the amount of seed that's being spread during that operation. Next slide. So in review, this last year, we were able to essentially remove three hundred and ten tons of fuel, partnering with our community in the neighborhood chipping project. So the neighborhood chipping project is we break up the 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 upper half of the community in eleven different neighborhoods, and it's all very organized and outreach to the community that they're each week, they put the the brush out, they do their own clearance, then we bring a contractor by to chip it and to remove it. So three hundred and tens of fuel removed during that operation or that program. Eight miles of roadway, like I mentioned, which resulted in sixty tons of limbs that were removed off the district's roadways. Twelve miles of of roads and trailheads were whipped during our roadside weed abatement program, excuse me. And then, like Chief Briner mentioned, our home hardening vent assistant program, we had seven homes participated just last year and we hope to expand this next year. And then during our fuel treatment network, we did fifteen acres of the sixty acres in the maintenance treatments, and we had twenty hazard tree removed throughout the district. And all these programs are reoccurring annually, and they expand and contract depending on the need and the funds that we have committed to each project each year. Next slide.
Yeah. Okay, so the next two, next two areas of our of our wildland programs are public education and outreach. So we have a ready, set, go mailer that goes out every year that that discusses all of the the aspects of preparation that the community needs to go through to to be ready for an event like this, what it what they need to do to to put in place for their evacuation plan, and then what what it will look like when they need to go, what our messaging is, and so that they can be prepared. Much of much of what of preventing this is being prepared for what's going to come. So public education and outreach is is essential component of all of of our of our programs in general. We do a lot of work within the community, as Nick just described, all of those programs and projects. But outreach and and communicating what will happen and what the expectations are is essential to to our success. So weed abatement, the weed abatement program is something that I mentioned prior to when I was giving the the intro where we go about and. prior to when I was giving the the intro where we go about and and work with the residents to ensure that their defensible space is adequate. What we didn't talk about yet is defensible space surveys. So so community members are able to reach out and and set up an appointment with Mavor Nick where they can come out and talk about their specific parcel. And and what they can be doing better. What they can plant, what they shouldn't be planting, where it should be, what type of maintenance is necessary. So you know, a lot of, there's been a lot of discussion over the years about eucalyptus trees and and the dangers of those where we're in reality. They're not any more dangerous than than many of the other vegetation that we have around. And in fact, there's a lot of vegetation that's more dangerous. As long as those eucalyptus trees are maintained. And that's the type of, you know, that's just one example of the type of education that occurs with our outreach and then and then the type of information you can get from a sensible space survey. You have a report that we can give you at the end of it, pictures and explanations of of what you can do to to better help us help you make it through a fire event. So we have our fire danger rating signs. We have four of them throughout the community that that's just another way for us to to help keep on the forefront. The the fire risk that that we may be going through currently in in our district. So we also do outreach in the journal. We we just hired our first ever Public Information Officer for the Montecito Fire Department. And and she's she's working tremendously on our social media as well as our other forms of public outreach, just just to ensure that that we're communicating, clearly communicating all of our needs and desires and and getting the feedback necessary from the community to to help assist you. But we also have Nick is on the the board of the Fire Safe Council. And it's just another aspect where we can work with our cooperating agencies and ensure that we have a a complete plan for the entire front country. You know, fires don't don't know jurisdictional boundaries. So if we're not working hand in hand with Hark Summerland and Santa Barbara City and Santa Barbara County, then we're not going to be as effective in protecting our community or the surrounding communities. Next slide. So planning. Planning is a huge part. Like Nick said, this is, these are ongoing projects and we're always looking for ways that we can expand and and make things better and and be be proactive and progressive in our in our approach. So currently we're going through, we hired a company to do a community emergency evacuation analysis. We recognized that in Paradise where where it was the, it was the model for evacuations that that most communities used. And obviously there were some, there were some major, major problems that weren't addressed in that original plan. And so we recognized that that we should address those. So we're currently going through that to ensure that we have a scientifically based approach to an evacuation analysis for all different types of scenarios that we may encounter within our community. You want to talk about the last two, Nick?
Sure.
More.
Okay, so the second one is a 10 year vegetation management plan. So essentially that is aligning our vegetation management program. Looking out into the future and aligning it with the state's environmental impact report. It's called the CAL VTP. That was just assigned this last year. So essentially looking and seeing what project could potentially be done within the the 10 year period. And having a contractor align that with our with the already signed and approved environmental impact report to make sure that our projects are both meeting environmental compliance and are considered what they call shovel ready. So if there are grant and other opportunities that come up for funding that we have that and will just be an additional a reason for us to be granted. We also are partnered with PhD students and staff from both Wesmont and University or UC Santa Barbara. And we have several monitoring plots established across the northern parts of the district in the wildlands. Where we're looking at the revegetation of the of the wildlands. And being flexible to understand that if we need to adapt our management, that we both understand the reasons why. And how best to adapt that management to ensure that we're doing everything we possibly can to to mitigate the threat of wildland fires to the community itself. I believe that's it. The next slide is just a prompt for questions that any of you may have and we'd be happy to answer.
Commissioner Keller.
Thank you very much for the report. That was very, very helpful. I just wanted to make one comment and then I have a few questions. It was very distressing to read in the paper either this morning or yesterday morning that for the first time fires are burning at higher elevations. Elevations that were thought to be too moist to support a fire above 8,000 feet. And this is a very distressing new development. It doesn't affect us down here, but it just is a wave of the future and it's it's just very concerning. So that is something that when you talked about your statewide fire situation, that's the new and unfortunate development. I just wanted to clarify. You talked about in Montecito, there are areas of quote higher elevation above East Mountain Drive, above Bella Vista. You referenced 20 acres. I was like appreciate clarification as to what was that reference to?
Yeah, so it's in reference to our, what we call our Fuel Treatment Network, which totals about 60 acres. It spans the northern boundary of our district. And essentially runs, it buffers the Los Padres National Forest to the northernmost property boundaries. And so we, through our monitoring and just experience, we've we think that the best rotation for the treatments are about every three years. So we do about 15 to 20 of the 60 acres annually. And then we work our way essentially across the district west to east. And by the time we get to Bella Vista on the eastern end and the cart boundary. It will be time to start again on the west side of West Mountain Drive at the city boundary.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you for clarifying that because you later mentioned the fuel treatment when you did about 15 of 60 acres. So I didn't know it 20 seemed like an insufficient amount for that area. So 60 acres makes more is more understandable. So you do both the brush clearance and the fuel treatment on a rotating basis. And how is the fuel treatment different than the brush clearance?
The brush clearance is a component of the fuel treatment. So we call the Fuel Treatment Network and one of the treatments is brush clearance. Another tool that we're using since the Thomas Fire is grazing. We incorporated sheep up near the tea gardens last year. And part of that 10 year program and ensuring that we're in compliance environmentally is to expand on that fuel treatment network, that 60 acres. Because it wasn't real really realistic prior to the Thomas Fire, given the maturity of the vegetation and the steep slopes. Grazing wasn't an option. Human, human treatment is never an option because of how steep and how far it is to get it to a road to actually remove the vegetation. But since it burned over and it's now starting to revegetate, we're going to take the opportunity to graze in some strategic locations to try to increase that buffer of that fuel treatment network.
Oh, great. Now that that was my next question was about grazing. Because I'm a big proponent of goat and sheep grazing. And so I'm glad to hear that you're making use of that. You hadn't mentioned that. Thank you. Of the invasive weeds, I was just curious. You mentioned tumbleweeds, which would be difficult for goats or sheep to graze on and castro beans. And then you mentioned tree tobacco. That's something I hadn't heard of. Did I mishear that?
No, you'll see it oftentimes along some of our creekways. It's the lighter green vegetation that gets really tall. And when it blooms out, it has yellow flowers. So it's it's very invasive. The seeds will get in the creek beds and will spread down. So you often see him, you know, kind of filtering down the creeks.
Okay, so those three plants are probably difficult for grazing. So you would have to use other means for clearance. Yes?
Well, and also the 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 part about grazing that we try not to do is to spread nauseous weeds. So we purge them prior to bring them onto the district. Excuse me. And the goal is to to it's labor intensive, but to pay a contractor to manually remove those invasive weeds before we come in with a a a hand treatment or with grazing to try to limit the spread.
Got it. Thank you. And just because, yes, we know about the tragedy of Paradise. But recently with South Lake Tahoe, they were just on the verge of implementing their evacuation.
Susan, we lost you.
Susan, you're you're frozen.
There needed to be pretty mass evacuation. I mean, given that there are only in the community, three north, south corridors. This could create a paradise type situation. Would that be too much, you think, for the community to ask of the community? Or is this something, a drill like this, something you think would be worthwhile?
I I I think you may have cut out with your
Cut out for a while. We lost you for like
Oh, that's too bad. Okay, I'm just saying that I'm wondering if it might be prudent to have an actual practice drill of evacuation. Because the tragedy of the Paradise situation was that they never anticipated a full community evacuation, which is what they needed to do. And we may find ourselves in that kind of situation. And with the limited number of north, south arteries in the community. I'm wondering if you might actually try to run a practice drill for the entire community. Is that something that might be contemplated?
Yeah, that's that's a great question. I know it was right before the T fire, we actually did a a a practice drill. It wasn't, it wasn't community wide. We didn't actually evacuate, but all of the back back work between all of the different agencies within a couple of weeks prior to the T fire, we we performed that with the Sheriff's Department. All of our surrounding cooperators and it definitely assisted tremendously in how how well we were able to to evacuate. So those are, those are the types of questions that that since we're not specialists in that field, why we hired the consultants to analyze all of that. So it as part of their modeling, they they go through without without needing to actually physically move everyone. They go through and and look at all of those those factors, you know, that we have limited north, the south arteries. We have road closures. We have the freeway construction that's going on. So they take into account all of those different different factors and run all of the different models to identify where where we can improve. So without actually needing to push everyone through the process, we can identify choke points, areas that that we want to move them, identify places that we need to to bring all of the the vehicles. One of the the major components, though, which I think addresses a little bit of what what you're talking about is is community outreach, discussing all of those those. So without actually putting everyone through an evacuation drill. Hopefully we can get them all of the information they need to understand what it would look like, feel like, what they need to do to prepare, where they would go, what we would be doing. So again, we rely on the specialists that that do that work to tell us the best way to to get that information out and and how we can best assist in the actual event itself.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
Commissioner Palice.
Yes. That information distribution be very critical. I imagine you'll use the Montecito Association, other or practical distribution points to get that information to all of us, if nothing else in our mailboxes. But what I wanted to ask you regarding these invasive plants that we are dealing with. Are we doing, are we using any kind of chemicals to to eradicate these invasive plants? Is that something it's not permissible for you to use?
Yeah, we don't specifically on any of our our projects. We try to time it at the time of year before it goes to seed and after a rain event where we are able to remove them at the roots. And that, I think we're able to do it routinely enough that we're we're actually making an impact. And we've been paying attention the last three or four years and and definitely have seen a reduction in the ones that the species that we're targeting. You know, you couldn't, you can use herbicides, but I think there's a a certain level of restrictions and permitting process. Given the 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 larger distances that we're trying to cover and the proximity to creekways that it probably goes above and beyond what what we're trying to accomplish.
And follow up to that. So do you use subcontractors to obviously to get rid of, to to man these weed whackers or whatever, or do you guys do this yourself?
All of our projects are contracted out. We have a list of local vendors who specialize in certain sort of vegetation management, whether it's tree removal, weed removal, chipping, hauling away. So we have vendors that we utilize.
And then regarding the sheep, do you have a vendor that brings his sheep in and takes them out daily? Or I'm sure you don't have a pen in your backyard of your stations, but how do you manage that?
We use an outfit. They're called Kwama Lamb. We use them because they've done quite a bit of work on the front country at some of the open spaces and restoration projects. They do use fencing to pin them. They have a predator dog that stays with them. And part part of kind of the process of of us figuring out how best utilize them is, you know, the length of time, the size of the pens that we keep them, how intensive do we want the treatment to be? And a lot of that has to do with the time of year, what they're actually eating. And then also the steepness of the slopes, because it's always a balancing act with vegetation removal of trying to keep enough vegetation on the slopes to retain soil stability. And then also to remove as much of the fire threat, kind of keeping those two things in balance.
So do you monitor that yourself or do you take recommendations from others regarding the use of and the extent of the use of the animals?
Yeah, we use, you know, we coordinate with the vendor with Kwama Lamb. And it's kind of a shared effort. And then also I mentioned the universities that specialize in 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 plant monitoring that also help advise us on that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Great. Commissioner Seth Hour.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. This presentation was extraordinary. Thank you so much. I think the PowerPoint. If you could put it on your website, I think that would be very helpful for the community to review. So if you could think about that, I think if there's any way that would be great. And the community would be appreciative to review that. How do you in fuel management regarding all of our trails? I would think that is definitely a a challenge. What is the approach vis a vis roads for fuel management, trimming, etc.?
Okay, good questions. In in terms of your first question about the PowerPoint. We have a story map, which is, I think, even more elaborate. And tells a better story of essentially what Chief Reiner and I just presented. It's under our Montecito Fire website. If you go to the left wildfire prevention, it's the second one down. It's called the Interactive Story Map. And it puts you in the context of the Thomas Fire and how each of our treatments were utilized by the management team and were effective in suppressing that fire and and relatively the success that we that we had defending our community during that event. So that's that exists and we'd be more than happy to, you know, it it's kind of an evolving tool. So anything that you think we can do better in terms of how we educate and discuss our treatments would be appreciated. So I guess a lot of our projects are collaborative in nature. Montecito Fire owns no property, obviously. So it's either with the property owner themselves. Or with the Los Padres National Forest in terms of the trails. We do work and coordinate with the Montecito Trails Association. They do a ton of work. There's also the Los Padres Association that does a lot of trail work on the front country. And then as as you guys are probably well aware of, Southern California Edison has a lot of the easements on the road systems that kind of weave in and out of our trail systems. As you work their way between Montecito and Los Padres National Forest. So we coordinate regularly with all these entities more some than others, given the conditions, like specifically right now, we're doing a lot of communicating and field trips with Southern California Edison, because a lot of that road system was damaged after the debris flow and trying to and trying to work with them and the Trails Association to repair that road system so we could use it during emergency events.
Thank you. Are there any metrics regarding the regrowth after the Thomas Fire in our community? Has there been any evaluation that you may know or be able to share?
Yeah, we touch on that on the story map as well. Some of these, the monitoring plots were strategically placed to be both within the Thomas and the T-fire scars. And so we measure fuel loading. The thing to kind of understand with chaparral is it re-vegetates really quickly. It's evolved with fire and to stabilize the slopes. But it takes over a decade, if not more, to really generate enough dead material within the vegetation itself, that that's what sustains fire spread. So, you know, 15 to 20 years post-fire is when you start to see a chaparral landscape like we have here, able to, you know, sustain fire spread in a very strong wind event. But really, it takes, you know, even longer, 20 to 30 years before you can get it to where it's at the intensity that we saw during, you know, the Thomas Fire and the T-fire. So we're monitoring that, the fuel loads, the dead fuel loads, and trying to target our treatments accordingly.
Thank you very much.
Terrific. Well, I want to thank you for a wonderful presentation. I think, you know, we as the commission and the community are grateful and happy to have this information. And I'm sure that everybody watching has been adequately informed of your activities. So thank you so much.
It's our pleasure. Yeah, thank you for having us. And if you have any other further questions, we're available.
Thank you very much.
I'm Mr. Chair, and members of the commission, we do, we should have some public comment, if there is any.
Well, we will open, we will open the meeting to public comment. David, any takers?
It looks like we do have one. Our first speaker will be Ashley Mayfield.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Ashley Mayfield. I'm here from Montecito Trails Foundation. I enjoyed that presentation from Montecito Fire. Thank you guys so much. I happen to be here for the lot split issue. But on the question about the Edison roads, I just wanted to sort of chime in because it's an interesting piece. After the debris flow, Edison came in and did a beautiful job clearing the roads as they had historically annually cleared, you know, the catways above the community. After the February 2019, sort of, some people will consider it a minor debris flow that we had in February 19, but significant storm. We had huge washouts on those Edison roads that make them impossible to traverse by, you know, any kind of emergency vehicle in most locations. I cannot personally get any good response from Edison. But if you guys would like to try to rally them, it would be interesting to hear. The rumor amongst us in the trail community is that they have gone to using helicopters to service their power poles and are mostly abandoning those roads. So if there is an expectation from the community, if there's an expectation of fire safety, that those roads would be cleared and usable, you know, in any kind of event, I think it would be in the best interest of Montecito to pursue, you know, an answer. And in getting your answer, we, of course, would be happy to support the clearing of those roads. We just don't have the okay to do it now. Although some of it is quite grand in scale in terms of the damage that was done in 2019. So that's it. I just thought I'd bring that up.
Ms. Mayfield, thank you.
No problem.
Seeing no comments or questions, I'm going to close public comment. And we are going to move on to our next item, the Meridaro lots.
Chair Kupiak, sorry. Would it be something that we could ask the fire district to pursue in terms of court communication and coordination with Edison?
I don't see reason why, as the fire department's still here.
It looks like they are, and I just think that that's a very valid concern and possibly something that could be communicated, coordinated with the fire district. Is that something you've contemplated, Mr. Bryner and Mr. Elmquist?
Yeah, correct. And we've had two meetings, personal meetings, field trips, to show them the damage. And unfortunately, they had some issues with their previous project in Mission Canyon that maybe some of you are aware of, that kind of put them on heightened alert in terms of a lot of the repair that's occurring along their road network. In terms of Ashley's comment, they do do surveys both with drones and helicopters. But they're well aware of the strategic importance of that road systems, both to access fires, but also for emergency evacuation of injured trail or gone trail rescues. And so Chief Taylor provided comment in the letter, and it's full support from the department in the repair of that work and the communications occurring currently. It's just going to, it's not something that's going to happen overnight, and it's probably going to be extended repair, especially after the Mission Canyon issues that they had.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okeydoke. Let's move on to item, our item, which was number two, and now is number three, the Meridaro lot split.
Chair Kupiak, could we entertain a break of about five or 10 minutes, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Let's take a 10-minute break, and we will resume again promptly 11 o'clock.
Thank you very much.
Staff just doesn't want to, you know, they don't want to work in the office.
Mr. Chair, we're back on the air whenever you already start.
Okay. Let's see, is everybody here? So let us resume our meeting of September fifteenth, and we are now going to hear our item number three, the Maridaro lot split. So I could have a presentation that would be great.
Before Mr. Lee starts, um, let me read it to the record. The filings are hearing on the request of Greg Crawford, property owner and applicant to consider case number nineteen TPM six, and to determine the project is exempt from the provisions of SEQA pursuant to state SEQA guideline section one five three one five.
Great. Mr. Pettit?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Just a reminder to call for ex parte communications before you get to the applicant.
Well, I, we should do that right now, I guess. Are there any ex parte disclosures for this, for this particular item? Commissioner Sethauer?
Thank you. Yes, I did a site visit to the property with the, with the applicant team on this past Thursday and spent about forty-five minutes on the property. Thank you.
Commissioner Keller?
Yes, thank you. Am I unmuted? Yes. I also did a site visit yesterday with Commissioner Palice. The full applicant team was there, and we had about a forty-five minute presentation that was extremely helpful. I also had a phone conversation with Ashley Mayfield, the president of the Montecito Trails Foundation.
Thank you, Commissioner Keller. Commissioner Palice?
Might be on mute, Commissioner Palice.
Oh, pardon me. I guess I should stay muted because Susan spoke for me just well, so I was there with her, and it worked out fine. Thank you.
Okay. See no other comments? Let's begin with the staff presentation. David, did you have to read this into the record?
Mr. Chair, I did that just before ex parte declarations.
I'm sorry. Okay, then let us begin.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Travis Lee, and I will now present the proposal for the Miradelot lot split project. On this slide is an aerial view of the project site. The property shaded red is located in the inland area of Montecito off of Park Lane. It is currently zoned, single-family residential, five-acre minimum lot size, and has a land use designation of single-family semi-rural residential, five-acre minimum parcel size. The next slides will detail the existing site conditions. The map depicts the two legal lots of fifteen point two three eight and one point seven oh three acres divided by the green line, proposed to be split into three lots. The product consists of sixteen point nine four one acres with existing residential development on existing parcel one. On the next slide, we will show you the existing development and access driveways highlighted in purple. Existing development is located on the southern portion of existing parcel one, while existing access driveways are located on the eastern and western sides of the parcel highlighted in purple. The proposed project is a request for approval of a tentative parcel map in compliance with county code chapter twenty-one to divide two legal lots of fifteen point two three eight and one point seven oh three acres into three legal lots of five point six three seven, five point three four one, and five point nine six two acres. While no development is proposed as part of this project, building envelopes will be created on parcels two and three to ensure future developmental, future development avoids environmentally sensitive habitat, steep slopes, cultural resources, and public trails. All existing development will remain on proposed parcel one. The next slide will, will highlight the proposed envelopes outlined in blue. Here are the proposed building envelopes on two of the new parcels. Proposed parcel one has existing development, and as stated previously, no development is proposed as part of this project. I will now discuss the project's consistency with the applicable policies. The proposed project with, would be consistent with the comprehensive plan, including the Montecito Community Plan policies regarding adequate services, noise, biological resources, parks, recreation and trails, and cultural resources. I will now highlight some of key policy issues, starting with biological resources. Approximately one point four two acres of environmentally sensitive habitat colored green on the map exist as coast live oak woodland and is located outside of the proposed envelopes. As you can see, the proposed envelopes are designed to meet the standard of the twenty-five-foot setback from oak woodland. Future development is conditioned with tree protection policies consistent with the Montecito Community Plan. If the existing driveways are required to be widened, the product is conditioned to widen the driveway on the inside edge away from the coast live oak woodland. There are individual oak trees scattered throughout the envelopes where future development would be required to follow the tree protection conditions of approval included with this map. With regard to recreational policies, segments of the Wyman Trail and Old Pueblo Trail, highlighted in blue, currently exist on the parcel for hiking and equestrian uses. The Wyman Trail was recorded with a revocable notice of consent to use of land in nineteen seventy-two. The Wyman Trail is located approximately fifty feet outside of the proposed building envelopes on proposed parcels two and three. The proposed subdivision and potential future development will not interfere with the public's existing rights to use of the recreational trail. In regards to cultural resources, none of the existing buildings are historically relevant besides the main dwelling on proposed lot one that is eligible for county landmark status. An extended phase one concluded no potentially significant resources discovered on proposed lots one and two. Two isolated artifacts were located on proposed parcel three outside of the proposed building envelope. As a precaution, any future development is conditioned to stop work and notify PND if any unknown cultural resources are encountered during construction activities. A pre-construction cultural resource training shall be held. And archaeological and Native American monitoring for all ground disturbances within a hundred feet of the newly discovered cultural resources on parcel three are required. Concerning zoning consistency, the proposed product will result in three residential lots consistent with the purpose and intent of the five E one zone. The lots would comply with the required lot and building size area of five acres and a minimum lot width of two hundred and seventy feet, and the maximum density allowed for the E one zone district, which is one single-family dwelling per lot, plus one accessory dwelling unit and residential accessory structures. No development is proposed, and future development would comply with the rules, regulations, and policies. In compliance with SEQA, the project is exempt from environmental review pursuant to SEQA guideline sections one five, section one five three one five, since the product involves three parcels. No development is proposed. The parcel was not involved in a division within the past two years, and the average slopes are less than twenty percent. In conclusion, staff recommends that your commission make the required findings for approval of the project, determine the project exempt from SEQA pursuant to SEQA guideline section one five three one five, and approve the project subject to the conditions of approval. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available to answer any questions you may have. Also to note that a representative from Parks CSD is available to take questions as well. Thank you.
Terrific. I see a hand raised. Susan, Commissioner Keller?
Thank you very much. I just have a couple of questions. In the staff report, it says that proposed parcel two is a flag lock lot shape in order to provide access to the proposed parcel. And it says it will not meet the width requirement. And just to clarify, I mean, I have no problem with the width requirement and that with that being included. But during our site visit yesterday, which was extremely helpful to see everything on the ground, it was explained to us that the reason the flag pole was added to the flag-shaped lot was to increase the acreage to meet the five acre minimum, and that the portion that is included does not include access. It, because access is provided by an easement over parcel one. So that is inconsistent with what we saw on the plans yesterday. And I don't think it's a problem. I just think there should be consistency. So I guess, Mr. Lee, can you explain why there's that inconsistency?
As we're looking into it?
Commissioner Keller, we're just pulling up one of the slides. Just give us just a minute.
Now, see, if you look at that project description, the outline on the east side of parcel two does not include the roadway. And I specifically asked, well, why is the lot line not down the middle of the roadway? And they said that they wanted to keep the roadway on parcel one and just grant an easement for access to parcel two. So the, the, the flag pole part is not for access. It is for increased acreage, which, as I say, I don't see a problem with. I just think there should be a description in the staff report with what we were told was on the plan.
Okay, Commissioner Keller, the chair, I didn't, I don't know who that question is for. I
That was for Mr. Lee because in the staff report, it says it's in order to provide access, and that is not the purpose of the shape of the lot. So I just think that that should be brought to light, and I don't know if it needs to amend the staff report. I don't anticipate any problem, but maybe there is a problem. And as I said, having, not having the line down the middle of the access road, I'm not sure of the justification of that because then there would be a mutual ownership of the access road. Would that make it simpler for future development or not? So I guess I have several questions.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Commissioner Keller and to the chair. We don't need to revise the, the staff report, but staff can clarify that point. If Mr. Lee or Mr. Tuttle could provide some clarification, and I believe the applicants could also address that comment as well.
Commissioner Keller?
Thank you.
Commissioner Keller through the chair, could you clarify where in the staff report was that? Was that in the findings section?
Pardon me. It's on page eleven of the staff report, six point three point one, I guess. Top of page eleven. Proposed parcel two is a flag lot shape in order to provide access to the proposed parcel.
Commissioner Keller through the chair, we can correct the findings to reflect that, that the proposed parcel two is a flag lot in order to meet the minimum parcel size requirements.
Thank you. That would be accurate to what they told us, and I, there is no problem either way, but I just would like the accuracy. Thank you.
Commissioner Sethauer?
I do have a couple more questions, if you don't mind. One was the, with the Wyman and the Old Pueblo Trail, which are both on the parcel. Actually, we didn't discuss the fact when we did the site visit that the Old Pueblo Trail is on the parcel. It says the Wyman Trail was recorded with the notice of consent to use in nineteen seventy-two. Can someone explain to me the status of the Old Pueblo Trail? Is that, is that under the same notice of consent to use, or was there a different mechanism when that was created? Maybe Parks can explain that. Mr. Ammon?
Sorry, commissioners, this is Georgia Moon from Parks. Yes, the Old Pueblo Trail is along the, the northern edge of the property. I don't believe that's an easement either. I believe that just exists on the property to the east and the west of the parcel. I know there is an easement, but along the northern edge of the parcel, I don't believe there's an easement for that particular trail either.
And Simon, is there any notion of, we discussed a lot the fact that the other, the other use was created and approved in nineteen seventy-two. Is there any history of how that Oak Pueblo Trail, is there, is there any right to use it? Or is it just something that has kind of gone under the radar all this time?
Commissioner Keller, I'm guessing it's just been under the radar. That, that nineteen seventy-two use, I believe, just applies to the, the trails that are on the property. And there's just a, a short segment of that Old Pueblo Trail along the northern edge. So I would believe it applies to that, too. Ashley Mayfield of the Montecito Trails Foundation may know more, but that's my understanding. This goes back so far. I don't have the details of, of that. But that's my, that's my assumption is that it was just kind of under the radar all these, these decades.
Thank you. Well, maybe when Ms. Mayfield, if she speaks, we can ask that of her. Unless somebody else can give me any information like the applicant himself or themselves.
Well, I could speak to it, or Ginger can, I believe.
Yes, waiting to be called on, but yeah, I can definitely add to that, too, Beth.
Is it all right if I, if we ask the representatives of the applicant as well?
Yeah, I think so.
Thank you.
So Commissioner Keller is the chair. My, my recommendation is to, to conclude staff's questions and then have the applicant present and then ask applicant questions.
Okay, thank you.
That way we, we can get all the information out.
Yeah, if staff doesn't have the answers, that's, that's good to wait. And the last question I had was the reference to two isolated artifacts on proposed lots three. That was also not pointed out and discussed when we did our tour yesterday, and I'm just wondering where those are.
Commissioner Keller through the chair, those are, that is confidential information. But they are, but they are located outside of the proposed building envelopes.
Okay, and by isolated artifacts, can you define what that is? Is it a gravesite? Is it a, is it where some cultural resources were found?
Commissioner Keller through the chair, if I recall correctly, one of them was a chert flake. But I believe that's all I can say about that.
I'm sorry, one of them was a what, please?
A chert flake.
Could you define that?
It's, um, it's like a, like a shaving from a, like a tool or a weapon. Yeah.
Okay.
No human burial was found on, none of the cultural resources that were found during the phase one on proposed lot three involve here in burial sites.
Okay, thank you very much.
Commissioner Sethauer?
Thank you. Before we proceed, should we not entertain approval of a four-page letter that was received, I believe, yesterday or the day before from the applicant's attorney? So it can be a matter that is entered into public record. And then I've got a couple more questions. Thank you.
Jeff?
Chair could be, I, I leave that to discretion of the chair. I do recommend if you want to talk about the contents of that letter that you voted in, or you take a vote on whether or not to accept it as record. Otherwise, applicants will need to provide that information in their presentation. So my, my recommendation is to, to actually take action on it now if you want to consider any of those items on it.
Commissioner Sethauer, what's your preference?
Yes, I would move to vote the attorney letter from Ms. Collins, dated September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, into the record place.
I would second that motion.
All in favor?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I apologize, but overall remote, we had to do everything roll call.
Okay, roll call vote.
Commissioner Palice?
Aye.
Commissioner Keller?
Yes.
Aye.
Commissioner Sethauer?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
And Chair Kupiak?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. And I have, I have a question for Mr. Lee in the staff report regarding conditions of approval, attachment B. Can you point, can you reference where any trail condition is listed? Are there con- conditions that reference trail usage as a condition for this project? For lot split?
Commissioner Sethauer through the chair, there, there are no conditions relating to the trail.
Correct. So that was my, that was upon my review, my understanding. So the letter we just accepted into the record, I would like to address that to the applicant when they are before us shortly because it appears that that trail and usage, it was in it was inferred that in fact it was a condition of approval. So, so we'll let that be clarified when the applicant steps up. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Palice.
You know, I think I'll wait and hear the applicant's presentation before I ask my question. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Miller.
Is the nature of the Old Pueblo Trail like, is this the multi-hundred-year-old trail that kind of goes over the mountains to Bakersfield? That would kind of, is that a, is this something that, that would exist by a prescriptive easement? Or kind of be a historical thing in and of itself? Or is that a, is the name of it a reference to its longstandingness? Or is it just a more recently developed trail that has a neat name? I, County, I guess I'm directing this to the County Parks and potentially to Mr. Pettit if.
This is Commissioner Miller, this is George Moon, County Parks. It's an old trail. It's been there for quite some time. It's been there for decades. I don't think it's the one that goes out to Bakersfield. I think it's just a, a local trail that's just been there for so long. And it's called the Old Pueblo Trail, I believe, because in this region of Montecito it's called the Pueblo Map or Tract, I believe. So that's why I think where it's got its name, but it is an old trail. It's been there, I think, since the seventies or sixties or even before. Whereas more recent trails in Montecito are more of the past couple decades. So this is one of the older trails in Montecito. And just so it's clear of what's the Wyman Trail versus the Old Pueblo Trail. On the slide you're seeing right now, that, that U that you kind of see toward the northeast portion, and Travis can maybe kind of point to it, that is the Old Pueblo Trail segment. And then from where that, or that fork in the road is, that goes to the west and then through the Montecito Water District and then down to the south, that is the Wyman Trail. So the Old Pueblo Trail, just like I was saying before, goes to the, to the east and to the west. And I just checked out the surveyor's website right now for Commissioner's color question. And I didn't see any sort of easement for the Old Pueblo Trail either. On that, that's not the end-all of searching for easements. But based on my cursory review, I didn't see any easement for that trail. But there is an easement to the east and to the west. Just to kind of confirm what, what I was saying earlier. So hopefully that answers both your questions in terms of what you're referring to.
I beg your pardon, but an easement for the Pueblo, Old Pueblo Trail to the east and west of that particular section that is in the property itself?
Yeah, to the east of the parcel, the trail continues to the east. And, and then it, and then it terminates on a roadway. There is an easement there now because that's a separate parcel, probably as part of some subdivision some years ago. So that easement exists. Are all these trails around the county adopted Parks Recreation Trails Map, even the one that we're seeing here? Okay, so to the east, there's an easement. And to the farther west, there's an easement as well where the Old Pueblo Trail goes to the west. Now, does that easement continue from the property line? In the location, I have to check some more, but I know, because there's another project farther on Park Hill Lane. And, and we're dealing with moving an easement there. So I know the Old Pueblo Trail easement exists farther west. Does it exist directly to the north of this parcel? I believe it does, but I have to check some more and dig some more to see if it exists. But the point is, is that the Old Pueblo Trail generally to the east and west of this parcel do have trail easements that exist now.
But not on subject property?
Not that I found right now and not from my search before. But again, these searches that we do here on the surveyor's website and elsewhere aren't the end-all, but they're pretty good though.
May I just ask one last question? Sorry for Mr. Miller, I'm invading your space. When the easements, when the easements are granted, are they granted to the county?
Yes.
Is that the county is the holder of the easement?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Palice. You're muted, Ron.
Yes, I was going to wait for the applicant. I'm sorry, I'll lower my hand, sorry.
Okay. I believe it's public comment. Am I correct?
Applicant presentation first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, sorry. Let's move forward with the applicant presentation.
Good morning. There we go. Next slide, please. Good morning. My name is Ginger Anderson. I'm with Meridaro LLC. And Greg and Catherine Cropper, the owners of the property. Greg and Catherine are on the call today, as is Sandy Lejeune, their property manager, and Beth Collins, their land use attorney. If you have any questions directly for them, or I might need to lean on them if you have questions for me that I can't answer. I wanted to start by thanking staff, Travis and Alex and George for their time and hard work on this project. I do appreciate the conversations we've had to kind of vet the issues and all of that. Next slide. As Travis presented, the project is to create one new legal lot, three, where there are two existing now. The project is for estate planning purposes only. I'm going to skip over a lot of what I had planned to say because Travis did a great job with the presentation. I did want to notice that the Montecito Water District Reservoir occurs northwest of the property. Their access occurs across proposed parcels one and three, and none of that will change. The project meets county policies and will be consistent with surrounding properties in terms of size and use of this area. Next slide. By this map, we'll have two envelopes recorded. And those, again, as Travis said, were determined based on flatter areas of the property by existing access. Creation of easements across those existing access avoids steeper portions of the property and provides that development would be well set back from that trail. I think Travis's slide said something about 50 feet. You'll notice that the proposed envelopes are much further than 50 feet in a lot of cases. And I do appreciate Commissioners Palice and Senour and Keller coming out to see the property so they could see that the trail really is remote, removed, and really not impacted at all by this project. Or, and would not be impacted by the future development in the envelopes where we have them based on mature trees, topography and the like. The property has been in the ownership of the family for many generations. The family has allowed use of their land for the benefit of the fire department and others, Montecito Water, as well, and as well as a support, is a supporter of the Montecito Trails Foundation itself, including allowing use of their, the family's lower parcels for staging of horses and trailers and trucks during the Montecito Trail Foundation's annual hike and bike and ride event. Next slide. You can see that the trail is of course well-used. There is signage there already. All this signage occurs on, I believe, on the subject parcel as well. And I wanted to take this opportunity to clarify a few things that were asked earlier about that trail. So I'm going forward two slides, actually. There we go. So the trail as it is used at this time has what's called a notice of consent to use of land recorded on it from 1972. That notice of consent for use of land covers the Meridaro property that is shown here. We also have a title report for the properties to the north that has that same notice of consent to use of land. So the 1972 consent covers everything you see. It, it's, it does not include, you know, El Pueblo Trail or Wyman Trail. It simply says that owner, that it allows the right of public, I'm reading now, the right of public or any person to make any use whatsoever of the real property described in Exhibit A attached here to other than any expressly allowed by a written or recorded map agreement or deed or dedication is by permission and is subject to control of the owners. So essentially what they're saying is that they are allowing use for, and then again, I'm reading, the, the portion of said land described in Exhibit A, which is subject to this consented use, is the existing pedestrian and equestrian trails situated on said parcels. Descriptions are of the properties in general, like they're the larger parcel. The map, the trail that is mapped on here is not described in meets and bounds by this notice of consent. Simply said, because the consent said to use the existing pedestrian and equestrian trails, and because we were asked by the county to map the trail, we added, we had our surveyors walk the trail so that we could map it. So this is not a, a trail that's mapped in meets and bounds. It just says you, we, we are allowing you to use the trail. And again, it does have the same consent is recorded against the property to the north, the parcel number to the north. So I just wanted to make clear that that would cover all the land that we're in control of. And as my understanding would cover the property to the north as well. So whether the county has rights to other sections is kind of none of our business. It's what, that part that is subject to the map that is in front of you is this, is, is the existing pedestrian and equestrian trails situated on the parcels. So that's how we came up with this mapping. So to the point that was made earlier about whether or not there was a condition to require the trail. We had had conversations before this item was supposed to be at a planning commission hearing in May. Had had conversations with staff in Parks that they were interested in making this trail a formal trail easement. So what you have now is a notice of consent to use land. And what they were asking for was a formal trail easement to the standard of their current trail easements. So in our review, the county's nexus to make it a condition of approval would be if we had a significant impact on recreation by our proposed project. And if that significant impact raised to the level, rough proportionality of requiring it. So why we're bringing this up is because we understand that there is concern about the, the nature of the consent, which is revocable. As well that we understand Parks wanted bicycle use because this notice of consent applies to pedestrians and equestrians. So through that conversation and in weighing our alternatives here, as well as mostly wanting to continue with the generosity that the owners have shown to the community over time, that we wanted to address those concerns. So again, we understand that in order to alleviate the concern, we propose to change our project description by two pieces. One, to expand the current permission to include bicycles. And two, to include an offer to dedicate that is triggered by either of the following scenarios. One, sale of the property outside the family. Or B, revocation of the permission. So essentially, those two scenarios cover what we understood the concern to be. Essentially that this trail will never be revoked. It will become a formal trail at such time in the future. And we feel this is a wonderful solution that guarantees trail use in perpetuity. It has never been the intent or thought of the current owners to attempt to revoke the consent. I think we're all well aware that that would not only be just ungenerous, non-generous, but it would be very controversial and it would likely invite a lot of attention that, that, to something that would never need to be done. So essentially, now I'm getting off my script, if you could tell. But the, the purpose of this is to propose something as part of our application that alleviates the concern, that you will have, the county will be able to, at some point in the future, make this a formal trail easement. And it ensures that nothing will change regarding the current use, allowed use, and, and will add bicycles to the consent. So we think that's a great solution. There was a question about the trail that connects to Bakersfield or Fresno. I think what you're thinking of, Commissioner Miller, is the Fremont Trail. It's the one with the old wagon wheel, the rutted-out wagon wheel. Those are actually, that trail is, is way out in Goleta to the west. I had a project out there on an adjacent property to it. So I'm pretty familiar with that as, as probably being the one that you're talking about. And that is not this trail.
I was under the impression it wasn't, I'm sorry, I'm not supposed to respond.
Okay, so closing, our land use attorney, Beth Collins, has been working with county council on some language for an offer to dedicate. And we welcome any questions you have. It feels like we might get certain questions about potential scenarios for revocation or, or that kind of thing. And those kinds of details, I think, are going to be in the offer to dedicate. But as well, the, the intent is, is clear in our revised project description that we would, that the county is going to be able to, that the public will be able to use this trail forever. And again, this is a list of everybody on our team that is available for questions. The owners, Sandy Lejeune, the property manager, myself and Beth Collins, the land use attorney. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for that presentation. I see Commissioner Senour has her hand raised.
Yes, thank you very much for your presentation. I've got a couple questions regarding the OTD and a couple other things on the attorney letter, page two. And I'm not sure if you, if the attorney is there or Ginger, you want to handle this?
Beth is on the. I'm here. I'm here. Hi.
Okay, hi, hi, Beth.
Hi.
Yeah, there were, there's quite a lot in this letter. And one is the mitigation impact fee, okay, that, that was brought up. And you state there is no legal basis. And I believe that is in the conditions.
Just to be clear, there's a legal basis for the fee. And we're, we're willing to pay the fee. We just aren't willing to have as a condition of approval, the imposition of a trail.
Which it was, wasn't in the conditions. Right.
Commissioner, Commissioner, just to be clear, it was discussed that it would be imposed as a condition. So we were, it's a preemptive offer and kind of an olive branch. And, and I hope that the, the commission can see that this is actually an olive branch of another way to get around this issue and make it clear that the trail will be there forever. And we're actually offering this part of our project.
The OTD, however, has two conditions where it wouldn't be in perpetuity, correct? It would be sale of one of the new parcels outside of the family, correct? And revocation of permission to use. So I'm, I'm confused. Is it, is it in perpetuity? Or do those, if those two conditions apply, then, then it is revocable?
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners, and our, good, good question. It's actually the opposite of what you said. So let's just be clear. Right now, we have permission for pedestrians and Equestrians.
Correct.
We're willing right now to expand the permissive use to bicycles, non-electronic bicycles. And that again is permissive use that the landowner has been giving since the seventies and, but could be revoked at any time. So we are now willing to enter into a conditional offer to dedicate. The offer is made to the county, but the county can't accept it unless, one, we sell the property. Then you can accept the offer to dedicate and have the easement forever. Or we revoke the permission. So if we revoke the permission, then you can accept and have the easement forever. So right now, there's permission and we're saying we'll expand the permission. And we think we will keep the permission in perpetuity. But if we don't, you have the backup where you will get a permanent easement if we did revoke the permission. in perpetuity. But if we don't, you have the backup where you will get a permanent easement if we did revoke the permission. Or if a future owner were to
Thank you for the clarification. My next question is regarding indemnification. Could you sort of outline what exists now, say, if there's an injury on the trail, which is on private property, vis a vis what you're, in the proposed revised project description, the indemnification that you, that you reference?
Thank you for the question, Chair and Commissioner Senour. So on the indemnification front, right now, there's no official indemnification from the county. There are protections for landowners who allow the public on their land in the Civil Code, but there's no official indemnification from the county. It is a standard term to include indemnification in public trail offers to dedicate, and that's what we're proposing in the conditional offer to dedicate, that we would include indemnification. So should, should we either sell the property or terminate permission, then the county could accept the offer to dedicate. If they did decide to accept the offer to dedicate and open the trail, then the county would also be taking on indemnification.
Understood. Thank you. So the revised project description, which you're advancing, the language is not tight yet. It is not, okay. So there's, there's some work that needs to be done on that. This is a proposed revised project description, which I certainly, there are many elements that I'm sure still need to be worked out. So I just want to know, basically, that there's still some miles to go on this, or feet to go on this, before there is true language of a revised project, correct?
Yes, Commissioners and our, and County Council may want to speak to this more. We have had discussions. We have a draft that we sent, we've sent over and we've discussed. But our preference, the applicant's preference would be just so that the county makes sure that they get what they want in this OTD, and that we get what we want, that we propose that our project descriptions amended to say the applicant voluntarily agrees to enter into a conditional offer to dedicate. See Exhibit A. We don't have Exhibit A yet. We're working on Exhibit A. So we would recommend that we would put off the final, you know, my hope is approval of this project, which would include the OTD, until we have hammered out that document.
Yeah, thank you. That was my inference. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Anderson, or actually, this is Collins, maybe to answer this question. Is the only reason to having that flagpole finger that goes down adjacent to the original parcel and the trail, just so you balance the lots to make it five acres? Do you need it to be five acres? They all have to be five acres or more?
Yeah, yes. Chair Kupiak, Commissioner Paliche, thank you for that question. Yes, it is, it is the case that we needed to find five acres for each of the proposed lots. And so things got a little
Yeah.
We had to figure out how to, how to make that parcel five acres. So that one would retain the existing development. So it got a little funky.
Yeah, well, that, what that does, though, is breed other problems. From my perspective, I've done this before on my own properties. And so does the, the the creation of the new lot that's on the upper left side, which has the finger that goes down or the flagpole, do they have ability to access that anytime they want down the driveway that feeds their lot in the original lot? Is there any restrictions to their access to that property or? Because it's going to be a situation where, say you're in the first house, and you, the original 1940s home, or whatever that is, and you see someone, you know, playing around by the driveway, and then it's children down there that are, you know, part of the new lot. It's somewhat of a liability. At least it hasn't been for me to have, have someone else next to the easement, next to the driveway, in there, you know, whether they're getting poison oak or whatever they're doing. It just seems like it's unfortunate that you could not have broken that off at the top and not add that extra burden to the original lot. I mean, I assume that your, that your applicants are aware that there are, there are added liabilities for having that finger come down like it does.
Yes.
Ron, you're frozen.
Oh, shoot.
Not anymore.
No, you're not frozen.
I have been all morning, sorry.
I think I heard and understood the question about that, and the the purpose of the parcel map is for estate planning purposes and to make five lots, and I understand the potential there. I do want to point out that the finger or the flagpole portion that comes down is heavily planted, and there are shrubs and oak trees, oak trees that will be protected by this map, as well as the trail that occurs on that, that part of that lot. And so, again, it's for estate planning purposes, and that, that is definitely a good point for you. This is the proposed layout that works for what we're trying to accomplish at this time.
Okay, I just want to make sure that the applicant knows that there's, there's a burden to do that, and, you know, you have to weigh that against what you're doing. And I'm sure you thought about this is the only possible way to make a happy distribution of these additional five acre parcels, but I just thought I'd mention that. I'll drop it. Thank you.
Commissioner Keller.
Thank you. I would just like additional clarity on two points, because I don't think it was answered when Commissioner Senour referred to a property sale outside the family. Ms., I'm sorry, Ginger, Ms. Anderson, talked about that the irrevocable offer to dedicate would kick in when there was a property sale outside the family. You specifically said that. But if there is a property sale at any, is there any way that a member of the family who inherited one of those pieces of property could also trigger this irrevocable offer to dedicate?
Chair Kupiak, Commissioner Keller, thank you for that question. Yes, if somebody that inherited the property wanted to wish the permission, the permissive use, that is the other trigger, which, so it would be triggered by their trying to revoke the consent.
So any change of ownership of one of those parcels away from the current owners, would any revocation by the, concurrently with the change of ownership would trigger the the irrevocable offer to dedicate? Is that correct? I'm possibly, Ms. Collins, you should answer that.
I can speak to that, Commissioner Keller. So the way that it's worded now, and this is honestly a great example about why we think that we should hammer out the language and then put off the final vote, because the way it's worded in the letter and the way it's worded in the draft that we provided was use of the word "sale" of the property. And so we need to, and we need to make sure both with the applicant's trust in estate's attorney, right, that that language is correct, and then also with the, it's satisfactory with the county. But I think the main point is, no matter what, a trail will be there. Because there's either going to be permission. If the permission's revoked, then you get an OTD. Or in the future, should it be sold outside the family, it was the vision here. If it were to be sold outside the family, then you get an OTD.
And the, does that also, as I say, the question I raised, had to do with inheritance? Would that be covered?
The original, my understanding of the original vision is inheritance would not be covered, that it would be a sale outside the family, with the idea that this family has decades of history of providing all sorts of benefits to the county and providing since the 70s permission to use this trail. So therefore, if it's transferred outside the family, then we don't know those new people, and maybe they'll revoke consent. So we will trigger the OTD then.
And is the OTD, when the permission is revoked, does that refer only to the current owners or to any subsequent owner?
The revocation of the permission applies to anyone who would revoke permission, a current owner, someone who inherited, or someone who bought, any owner of that property. So that's why, really, you're covered. There's permission. If it's revoked, then you have the OTD.
Okay, just two final questions. Doesn't an easement guarantee usage in perpetuity?
Commissioner Keller, that's exactly right, and that's why we are suggesting the offer to dedicate of an easement. And so right now, you have permission. If the permission's revoked, then you will have an offer to dedicate an easement that lasts in perpetuity. So you will be covered either way.
But an easement, granting of an easement right now would avoid all of this difficulty with formulating the structure and the language of the offer to dedicate. Isn't that correct? You would just, they grant an easement, and you would not need these additional complications?
Commissioner Keller, it would be an offer to dedicate an easement. It would be the same thing. And you're correct. If an easement were recorded now, yes. And if it were legal for the county to require an offer to dedicate of an easement now, then, you know, that would be a mechanism. But it's our position, it's not legal or appropriate for the county to require it as a condition of approval. Staff actually came to the same conclusion, and that's why it's not a condition of approval in the staff report. But we found another way to satisfy this issue in that you will have the trail as it's been there for decades through permission. If the permission's revoked, we are signing, just so it's clear, we're offering to sign a conditional offer to dedicate now. So that will be recorded. It will be entitled. It will be shown any successor in interest on the property, and will burden the title forever. And all it means is, in the future, the county can accept that offer to dedicate should either it be sold outside the family or that permission's ever revoked. But that document will be there in title, signed, an easement in perpetuity, kind of standing there waiting for the county.
Just one last question. If the county did have an easement, would the county be liable for any kind of accident or injury on the trail?
I'm going to leave that to County Council to answer for you.
I guess he just left. I've lost him. I understand.
Commissioner, I would say it would depend on the language, and again, that's in negotiation. So the language itself of the easement would speak to that.
Possibly Mr. Moon could answer that.
Oh, there, there he is. I think Mr. Pettit's back.
Mr. Pettit, did you hear my question?
I did. I didn't want me to disappear. I heard, the question is whether the county faces liability for its trail easements, and I would concur that it depends on the language of the dedication. But as a general matter, the county potentially does face liability for claims associated with its maintenance of its trails, as a general matter, and then it depends on the specifics.
Thank you. Just, the only reason I'm going over this in such detail, and I'm sure this is Ms. Senour's belief, is the family has been incredibly generous to the community, and is a model for past usage and generosity to the community. And it just, it would seem so completely to simplify things if they voluntarily offered an easement. We completely understand that the county is not able to require it, and, but a voluntary offer would certainly simplify and clarify matters for everyone. So that's why I'm raising these issues, because it does complicate things quite a bit by taking this other course. Thank you very much for answering all my questions.
Commissioner Miller.
I am curious, I'm unclear whether this is a question for County Council or potentially Ms. Collins. Is, is this transformation from permission to easement, does that trigger a reassessment or kind of a change in property tax, one way or the other, in terms of of either now or at the point that it happens? If it happens at some point in the future? I guess, Mr. Pettit, first you, if that's appropriate, or if not, to Ms. Collins?
Commissioner Miller, through the chair. I'm not well placed to opine on the tax implications of the offer for this property owner, and I would defer to the applicant's representatives to answer that.
Commissioner Miller, through the chair. I would say I do not believe that it would trigger a reassessment. There's a trail there. It's by permission now, having an offer to dedicate. I don't think it's a material impact to the value of the property. Are you thinking like a conservation easement? That there would be some sort of track tax benefits? Is that what you're saying?
I was trying to ask the question in the more generic, but I was curious if the springing mechanism was being driven by estate and tax planning.
Oh, Commissioner Miller, through the chair. No, actually, that is not. It's, it's more, how would I put it? Just a matter of what's right, in that it isn't appropriate for the county to require this as a condition of approval. We're willing to offer it. It's been under permission for decades. We're not planning on revoking the permission, and we'd like to leave it as it is. And, but nonetheless, we're willing to offer this conditional offer to dedicate as a, an alternative path, a solution.
Thank you.
Commissioner Paliche.
I think you're on mute.
We can't hear you.
Ron.
Yes, I got it, sorry. So we're not voting today. So where do we stop when it comes to this presentation? And do we have to go through much of this again, or is this, is it just going to be consent next time? I'm kind of confused as far as the procedure. Can you answer that, Bob, or somebody?
Well, I'm not sure I can answer it, but it seems like we both have the same question. I'm not sure where this goes until the offer to, is the language for that is hammered out. I mean, I'm not sure what the planning commission is being asked to do.
Mr. Chair, if I may
You may.
Provide some thoughts. Based on, so we've had a presentation by staff and the applicant, as the project as proposed, the applicant's team has submitted a letter where they're offering, an offer to dedicate component to the project description. So if the planning commission wanted to consider that, my recommendation is that we do continue the item to allow the applicant's team and staff and council and their attorney to collaborate on that, and then come back at a later time with that ironed out, and then the planning commission will need to act on the project at that time. So it's my understanding that with all parties, that I think we're all in agreement that it needs to be continued today. And then it's really working on a date for when that would be continued. So when it comes back to Mr. or Commissioner Paliche's question, you would have the full project before you with this portion of it incorporated into the project description, and then you would act on the project at that time.
I think that's fine, Jeff. Just to close up, Donna, Commissioner?
Yeah, thanks. We need public comment, correct, before we, okay, make a motion for continuance, which I think is the consensus of this, of us. The other, I do have a question about including bikes on the path. The other, I do have a question about including bikes on the path, and we can either take this up now, and ask the appropriate persons who are before us today, Ashley or the applicant, or wait, you know, what components should we just move, move to the continuance? And maybe it's more appropriate to, as far as usage, to include bikes, perhaps it's best we can just wait until we hear this again after the continuance. So, I do have a question regarding bike usage, and I do feel, I've been on the trail many times, and I just feel it is somewhat at risk to include bikes. And would that be a legal determination, that bikes are included with permission to use? Or is it simply, if bikes are there, that's okay? So if someone could define if bike usage in, in this offering would be included, if it is informal or formalized where bikes must be included? So if someone could answer that, I think we could take public comment and move on to a motion to continue. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'll start for Commissioner Senhour, and then I might look over to the either Parks Department and/or Ms. Anderson for that response. My suggestion is, if the commission has any items today that they would like to have considered, or explored, or fleshed out more, then to put that out on the table, to allow staff to look into that with all the parties concerned, and then come back with that information in a later hearing. And so, Commissioner Senhour, if you have concerns about the usage of the trail and bikes, you could direct staff to have that to be looked at as part of the continuance, and then we could come back and provide information on whether or not it can be limited, or included, or a part of the agreement.
Thank you very much. Yes, thanks, I will take your recommendation. Thank you, Secretary Wilson.
Commissioner Polichek?
Yes, I just, there was discussion yesterday about the idea of maybe having alternate days for bikes, and then there was a comment earlier about non-electronic bikes, which, I don't know whether that was meant to be motorized, because, you know, electric bikes are quiet, and I don't, so there is some questions about, clarifications about the trail, so I think it's a good idea that we get that for the next meeting, that they come back to. Thank you, Jeff, appreciate it.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, this is Alex, if I can just chime in real quick.
Go ahead.
On the issue of bikes, and perhaps George could speak to this, or like we said, we can bring it back next time, but the idea of the addition of bikes is just to bring this trail into sort of compliance with all other public trails in the county, where they're all trails for which the county holds easements, they're all designated for multi-use, which includes pedestrian, hikers, equestrian, and bicyclists. So, because bicyclists aren't currently included within the consent of use, the idea was to add that in, so it'd be consistent with all other multi-use trails in the county.
This is a question I raised yesterday at the site visit, and just a complication that I think needs to be addressed. I appreciate that all the county trails are multi-use, this will not be a county trail, a county easement. And when there is multi-use with the bikes, horses, et cetera, as Mr. Polichek mentioned, because we discussed it yesterday, there have been some instances in which there have been conflicts in usage, and there have been restrictions such as alternate days for bikes and horses, et cetera. But those are restrictions and rules that can be imposed by the county, and if this were not a county trail, then that could not be done for this particular trail, and I don't know who would have jurisdiction of making that decision. It's my understanding that Montecito Trails Foundation has the maintenance obligation, has undertaken that responsibility, but I'm not sure they would be in a position to make any decisions about usage, in case there were problems that arose. And so, yet another, in my personal opinion, another argument in favor of just clarifying and simplifying it by making it an easement to the county, so that all of these issues are out of the hands, or out of the concern of the property owners.
Are you there? I see your hand raised.
Yes, hi, thank you so much, Chair Kupiak and Commissioners. I think the reason bicycles came up was, we heard from staff that bicycle use was something that they desired to have added. The concern with motorized is the noise, and e-bikes, yes, are quiet, I think there might be some discussion to be had about people being able to go faster with assistance, and how being faster may contribute to potential injury, but I'm not sure that was part of it, I think it was majority noise concern. If I may, regarding what we were hoping to accomplish today, I would like to have an understanding that, about where we stand with the project as a whole, and it seems as if the trail language is the final point, but I did wanna make sure that we could address anything else that might be out there, or if we're correct in understanding that the trail language is the item.
I would propose taking public comment at this time, and closing public comment, and then if we have any concerns or interest in anything that the public may present to us today, that we address it, and then we can move, move to continue.
I agree. Commissioner Keller, you have something quickly?
No, all I was going to say is that I think we're all in complete accord that the property, the lot line adjustment, the creation of the three parcels, there are no problems with that, I think all of us, the only concern are the trail issues, and so I'm prepared to take public comment and then move to continuance.
We're gonna open public comment on this project?
Our first speaker will be Ashley Mayfield.
Good afternoon, it's not often I get to say good morning and good afternoon on the same call. I just wanted to thank the property owners for their continued stewardship and generosity of the trail system. I think that they give great, you know, heritage to the equestrian community that's there, they've been great supporters of the trail for a long time, and, you know, I appreciate this offer of dedication, and as you guys all work together to draft what will become something that may be put in place, or maybe never has to be put in place, I think others will look to this. We have so many trails and larger properties that will be divided in the near future, that you guys are gonna continue to be stewards and set an example of what these easements could look like, and so, you know, I just appreciate that you guys keep that in mind as you do it. In terms of bikes, I don't have a huge opinion on the bike situation, it was brought up because county trails are multi-use, and so it would just keep, it would actually just make the easement fit the type of use that you have, so we already have bicycles there, so then it would just include them. Traditionally, on the county parks easements, we have no e-bikes, so e-bikes are not permitted on any of the county trails, or the Forest Service trails in Montecito. It's posted, people do break the rules, but we try to, you know, communicate as much as we can about e-bikes, so that trail would not be, if there was a county easement, it would not be an e-bike trail, just to clarify that point. And then if there were any other questions for me, I'm here for questions.
Thank you. Dave Bennett, is there anyone else?
We do have one additional speaker, and that's Derek Weston.
Good morning, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Good morning, Chair Kupiak and members of the commission, my name is Derek Weston. So I am an active trail user, and I urge you to support the applicant's proposal with respect to the Wyman Trail, I think it's a great solution, I use the trail regularly, it's a nice component of the system. I am a member, we are members of the Trail Foundation, and I've spoken to Ashley, who is a wonderful president, I have to say, Ashley of the Montecito Trails Foundation, everybody's lucky to have her. I think it's fabulous that there's such a large area of property that still is so lightly developed, and I think we're fortunate that we have owners that are striving to keep it that way, it's my understanding that their goal in doing lots of it is not to develop it, but to help make sure it stays in the family the way it has been for, geez, somewhat eighty, ninety years, I think. So, as everybody knows, they generously donated the trail to the community for a long time, some fifty years, now offering to expand it so it conforms to other uses in the county. I think that their offer, because they understand how important the trail is, is a win-win solution. It allows them, it allows the community to honor them by continuing to accept their voluntary use of the trail, with a down-the-road assurance that it will always be there. So, I'm glad, as I understand it, that everybody supports it. I'm completely confident, as an attorney, that County Council and the applicant's attorneys can work out perfect language to ensure that the trail will always be available while honoring the Crawfords, and I should say Greg and Catherine's willingness to continue to donate the trail. So, now I'm going a little bit off what I had thought to say, but I'm just a member of the public, and I haven't heard any issues about the lot split, so as an old landes attorney, I would have thought that that would be approved in concept, and that the matter would be continued only for the purpose of finalizing the language. This has gone on, it's my understanding, for many, many years, I would guess that the applicant would be delighted if the issues could be nicely narrowed to the only ones that are in contention, and then it makes the new scheduling a little easier as well. Anyway, thank you for hearing from me, and thanks to Greg and Catherine for everything they're doing for the community.
Thank you, Mr. Weston, for your comments. Are there any other public comments? That's it?
Mr. Weston was our last speaker.
Okay, Commissioner Keller?
Thank you, I just, I was going to ask Ms. Mayfield to just confirm that Montecito Trails Foundation has the responsibility to maintain the trail, but I think I was accurate in stating that. And the only other thing I want to say is that in all of this discussion, I want to make it clear that I agree with Mr. Weston, I think that the division of this, the foresight that they are showing in making this division of their property, and the lack of planning to develop or, you know, build more on the property is very admirable, and very greatly appreciated, and I think that it shows great generosity-
I remembered that, right.
Pardon? I'm sorry, can you hear me, I somebody interrupted?
Yeah.
Sorry. Anyway, all I was going to say is that, that I wish that everyone could be as thoughtful and as far-thinking in their estate planning as this family has been, and I also wanted to emphasize that I think we're all very appreciative of the past history of usage and generosity. My suggestion, or my encouragement to be more open to the notion of an easement, stems from my experience as a contract attorney, and I find that contracts are very difficult to anticipate every single problem that might arise, and obviously, contracts intend to look for solutions to future potential problems, but frequently, that doesn't always occur. And using a contract or a contract language, in lieu of a simpler easement solution, I would just encourage that to be something that the owners will keep in mind, if they wish to voluntarily make that move, I would fully support that. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Senhour?
Yeah, I would like to move to continue this item, to a date certain, to work out a revised project description, as the applicant has requested, and perhaps as far as Mr. Wilson's recommendation that we offer staff our suggestions for something that could be perhaps considered. I would include perhaps a Commissioner's, Commissioner Keller's thought regarding an easement at this time, easement dedication vis-à-vis the applicant's recommendation for an OTD, perhaps somewhere that could be fleshed out and considered by both council, County Council and the applicant. So, basically, I move to continue this until a date certain.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Senhour, couple of dates to consider as part of your motion would be the November seventeenth date, or December fifteenth. If it'd be okay with the chair and the motion maker, if we checked with the applicant's team to make sure either one of those dates worked.
That would be suitable.
Chair Kupiak, Commissioners, Mr. Wilson, I think that was a question, I think we could probably get this ironed out by the October meeting. November, I haven't checked with the client as to whether, November, what did you say the dates were, the seventeenth?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, the dates were November seventeenth or December fifteenth. Speaking with staff and understanding just the coordination on working with all the parties involved, I don't think October would be a feasible date to iron out the easements and have it all reviewed and ready to go. So my recommendation is the November, December. And those dates again are November seventeenth and/or December fifteenth.
Either of those dates would be fine with me, Greg, I'm looking at you.
They're fine with me as well, Ginger.
I would, if that's the discussion, that we're content with that, I think if we could have the continuance to the November, our November meeting, as Commissioner Keller will be unavailable for our December meeting, if that is appropriate to all, I would like to have the date certain for November, is it fifteenth? I'm sorry.
November seventeenth, Commissioner Senhour's the chair.
Seventeenth, thank you.
November seventeenth is fine with us.
Great.
So a motion is made, do I hear a second? Oh, hang on. Commissioner Miller?
Not to put a spanner in the works here, but I think there's broad agreement on this, is there not an approval we can give pending the mutual agreement by planning and planning staff and the applicants on this easement topic, like a springing approval? I, reading the tea leaves, it feels like we could kind of put this to bed today.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Miller, thank you for that comment. If you wanted to approve the project today, that would not include what the applicant's offering with his OTD. What you have before you is a project description, the applicant is proposing to work with staff to amend that project description to include language related to an offer to dedicate. We don't have that specific information today, so you couldn't take action on that today. So as much as I would agree that you would like to take action today, we don't have sufficient information to be able to take action if it would include that offer to dedicate that is being proposed by the applicant's team. So my recommendation is to continue it to November seventeenth, as the motion maker made, so that you'd have all the information before you to make that decision.
I think that that is the appropriate method forward. I think that that is the appropriate method forward.
Um, may, may I share Commissioner Senhour's motion? I don't think there's been a second yet.
There has not been a second. So, uh, Commissioner Keller is seconding the motion. And do I have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Kupiak.
I'd love to go first and it's yes.
Commissioner Polichay?
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Keller?
Aye.
Commissioner Senhour?
Aye.
And Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Well, that's great. We'll see you in, we'll see you in November.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you all for your, your.